So we'll go ahead and just maybe wait another minute or so, see if I think, are we just missing one person right now?
Who?
Who?
Councilmember Naplin and Councilmember Isaacson.
Right. I'm just happy I remembered what day it is. That extra day always throws me off.
That's good.
Hey Sarah, thanks for consolidating the two meetings into one, one document. Appreciate that. Just makes life a little simpler.
Oh, good. I'm glad you like that.
For sure. That's been a really nice change.
Do you want me to call Mr. Isaacson?
Yeah, would you mind? I was just trying to find his number because I don't, I don't think I have it saved yet. So if you have it handy, that would be much appreciated.
I do. Okay, I'll do that.
Okay. And if everyone's okay, maybe we just hold off for two more minutes, just to see if we can get him on or yeah, we can get going here in a second. Let's just hold on one minute. And do we also, do we have all the staff here? Are we missing Director Lenashevsky? Is he coming on a little bit later?
He should be coming. We have, you know, Dana's not gonna be able to make it because she's on vacation, but, but he should be on.
Okay. All right. Well, let's go ahead.
I was gonna say Mayor Protem, he doesn't have anything on the committee of the whole agenda, so he may come on.
Oh, I'm wrong.
That's good.
I know, he's number two, right? Unless, yeah, I wasn't sure. Or I could head that one up, but, okay, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 5:33 and get started. That way we can just get rolling here and hopefully John is able to join us. So with that, let's start with the good of the order. Do any council members have anything that they wanted to bring up? Go ahead, Councilmember Hoag.
Give me your pretend. So there's something I, I wanted to bring up last time, I, last meeting, I spaced and forgot to do it, but I think we're supposed to talk about whether the mayor pro tem role should be a one year or a two year because we have a discrepancy in the procedures and then the code says two different things. So I don't know if we can talk during this meeting as a, you know, and see what the council's preference is on that.
That's a good idea. I think I remember Administrator Opel talking about that. And I can't remember, is that something that we were gonna put on a Cal agenda for the future?
We have, I think we have it said, Sarah can remind me, I think we have it set for the first of February, we were gonna bring it up. But you know, we can, you can talk about it now, but I think, is it Sarah, is it on the first of February? To find out whether there is a whether there's consensus among the council for us to move forward, because we don't do, it's not from us, that's the council deciding you wanna keep it as one, which is what the law, what, what RCW said, or not RCW, but Duvall Code says, or you wanna do it with the procedure, which is two years.
Okay.
Yeah, we have it on the count.
So it sounds like it'll be the first of February. Does anyone else have any good of the order items? All right, not see, oh, go ahead, Rick.
All right, I was debating whether to spring this up or not, but I know I sent most of you out a update on the Fed's final resolution for the ARPA funds. And it does look like we have some good possibilities there. I did get the note from from you, I think, Kevin, that we're giving that a legal review, I think, right now. But if it does, if it's, you know, if it comes across, or if it, you know, stands as it appears, we have a very simple way to declare our use of the ARPA funds without going into any great amount of paperwork or, you know, item by item justification.
Well, yeah, it's, we, it seems like that's, that's a true statement. We are reviewing it to make sure and then it's still, there still has to be a review of what can be spent, you know, what is, what's still valid, but it's a lot more broad and a lot more liberal view than it had been, so.
Okay, Councilmember Lengel.
I just wanted to add to that, that I, with Dana, I attended the, the AWC training on that back in December. And I concur with Councilmember Schaefer that, and I've read the final rule as well, and I think there's plenty of opportunity there for Duvall to have a pretty straightforward project.
All right. Well, I have a feeling we might talk about that a little bit when we get to the staff position requests. That might just kind of naturally flow into that conversation a little bit. So with that, if no one else has any other good of the order items, we'll go ahead and just move on to our first agenda item, which is professional services contract for the city attorney, and I'll hand it over to Director Thomas. Oh, you're muted, Laura.
Thank you for knowing that, because I didn't know it. Once I go into screen mode, can everybody see my screen with just the one page PowerPoint? Okay. I might cough on occasion, so I apologize. I've got water and hot tea with me. I'm just getting over a little bit of a bug. This evening, one of the items that we have both in the Cal and then also on the council agenda is the City Attorney Contract Amendment. So just for a little bit of history, the city issued an RFP in 2018 for City Attorney Services. Ogden Murphy and Wallace was chosen and we went into contract with them in July of 2020. That contract did have, I guess I want to call it like kind of a check-in, which said, okay, we're gonna, let's do a quick check-in and if possible, either renew the contract or if needed, go back out for RFP. And so obviously, you know, staff and administration is recommending that we extend the contract through the end of 2024. This contract amendment would necessitate a budget amendment. We're, we're a bit over budget, so we'd need to do that as part of our cleanup of this biennium budget. Does council have any questions?
Go ahead, Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking about the past year and what might have contributed to going over budget and I was, I know the vaccine mandate was implemented and there were other COVID-related, you know, potential legal costs, and I'm, I'm curious, it doesn't look like it was broken out in that kind of detail. Do we have any idea of how much of that was related to the vaccine mandate, any associating, associated issues that arose from that?
No, we did not break it out as part of this process, but we did, we have spent quite a bit of money in this biennium on what I would call employment-type attorney services and then general city attorney services. You know, there was quite a bit of money that was spent through, you know, the executive branch, but the executive branch is part of implementing a lot of items, not just, you know, employee items, but other policies in our council meetings as well. One of the things that Dana and I talked about over the last couple of weeks, and honestly, we really wanted to do it before now, but we'll be working with Daniel, is we're gonna create a couple of new breakout items, so we're gonna have a human resources one, so that we can start to really kind of dive in and see how much are we spending in human resources. We're also going to break out council meetings as well, because believe it or not, we spend, we do spend quite a bit just in council meetings with our city attorney historically. Our city attorney came to one meeting a month and the meetings were usually a couple hours and were, you know, more than double what our, our historical trend line is for having attorney services at our council meetings. You know, but we also have a new city attorney too, but I think we're getting ready now when we, you know, with having a city administrator, that maybe at some point during this biennium, we'll be able to go back to that traditional model, which is having our city attorney present for one council meeting, and we would save probably, my guess is at least $10,000 to $15,000 a year in that particular area as well and our city administrator, Kevin Opel, and I have talked about that with us as a management team as well. So we're looking at different ways to be more efficient, you know, moving forward, but we had a lot of COVID policy and procedures go through. It wasn't even just the vaccine mandate. There was a lot of policy work, including even out of planning and questions that each department had to ask.
Thank you. So I, I guess I'm just looking at the list and trying to understand more of what is in executive. So if there was a staffing issue within the planning department or public works or police, it would still fall under executive because it's more of a human resources.
It would, it would, it would depend. Sometimes it would, it could get, if it was not in, like a position issue, then maybe it would be like a departmental one, but if it was an employee issue, an employment issue, then it would either go to you know, a different category or over to our other employment attorney.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it does seem like an awful lot, especially since I think that amount was a lot more than had been in previous bienniums even. So I think if we went back historically, it seems pretty high. So I know that hourly cost is more. But it'd be interesting to look at the total hours utilized to get more of an apples to apples of, are we really spending more time or is it a cost increase due to hourly?
Probably both.
Yeah. But to what extent? Kind of curious.
Yeah, we used to average between $2,000 and $4,000 a month historically, and now we're like, pretty much in that $8,000 to $12,000 a month range. So it, it has been an increase. But we also entered into this contract during COVID and during a large policy grind. You know, and they're working on other policies too that aren't just COVID-related, but also assisting on policy changes as well, even like within, I'll say the community development department, you know, where we're doing policy changes that are temporary for COVID as well.
So the amounts here are amounts that are not reimbursable by other things. This is, I'm just kind of
Yeah, this is non-reimbursable costs right here.
Full cost.
That's a great question.
And even the COVID work that is getting reimbursed by funding, that's not included here?
I don't know. I'd have to talk to Dana. I'm not sure if that was reimbursable or not. I'd have to ask her. That's a good question, though. Thank you.
So I saw, I saw Councilmember Lengel, but I was wondering, Mayor, did you have something pertinent to what Councilmember Naplin was discussing?
Yeah, the new firm, when we signed with Ogden Murphy Wallace, it was a 30% increase per hour for 2020. And it, believe it went up another $20 an hour this year. So just that alone is a huge significant cost increase. And then to Ms. Thomas's point, there has been a lot of policy and also response to new regulations, state laws. And if you take a look at how many agenda bills we used to pass per year versus how many we passed last year alone, we were well into the hundreds, well over 100, and normally we are well under 100. And so pretty much every agenda bill, most agenda bills are reviewed by the city attorney. Because if they're pertinent to come into council, they need some sort of council approval and they need some sort of review. So that, in alone, those two things alone are a significant cost driver in increased legal costs. So I just wanted to share that. So thank you.
So we'll go Councilmember Lengel and then Isaacson.
Well, I agree with everything the mayor just said. There is another thing that I've been watching, thankfully. One of the goals administration set actually quite some time ago was taking a closer look to make sure our code was in sync with our practices. And that's another area wouldn't necessarily be obvious in agenda bills, but there has been quite a bit of progress there as well.
Councilmember Isaacson.
Yeah, so as the new council member, as, as I ask questions, this information is somewhere for me to go find and dig and read. Please feel free to just point me there instead of wasting everyone's time. But that's 25% increase rate, about, if I did the math faster. That, those two numbers that we're talking about, is that gonna be here moving forward, that larger value that we're approving gonna be kind of the base now, or that, do we revisit each year and, and follow that? Mayor, what you said, you know, we have two hourly rate increases. At what point? And do we have a process that's, okay, once we exceed such an increase in rate, do we put a new RFP out? Because you know, just continuing to renew a contract, you're supposed to have contracts, you're supposed to save us money, right? And you, you know, what's the process? Again, point me where I need to go if I need to read something. We have to do that and not waste everyone's time.
Director Thomas, did you want to address any of that? And then Mayor also, or?
Yeah, I think you, Councilmember Isaacson. The city doesn't often do RFPs for city attorney services. This is really the first RFP the city had completed in 2018 after having almost a 20-year relationship with its last city attorney. And this is one of the reasons why we wanted to come back and have this discussion a little bit sooner during this contract process, but you know, in general, city attorney services are quite high. In general, across the region, are there attorney services that are less money? You know, absolutely. You know, and that's one of the things we did look at. You know, you don't necessarily pick the cheapest or the most expensive. You, you pick who you think the right fit is for your council and your mayor and your, you know, and your team. So that's what I would say on that particular item. We do, we go through a budget process every biennium and we estimate what we think we'll spend during that biennium. We really didn't think we'd expend, you know, what we have to date and what we're gonna have to budget for the remainder of the year. But I think till we know what the mayor said is we, we just had a lot of policy work. And honestly, I think we're gonna have continued a tremendous amount of policy work. If it's not necessarily in the executive budget or legislative budget this year, it's gonna be in community development, because we're bringing forward a housing action plan and SMP. There's just a lot of policy work, probably the next couple of years, at least the next two or three years. So I see that there's probably gonna be additional, you know, costing. We do have some reimbursable costs, so when we're working on a project that's development-related, that cost gets passed through at, honestly, at a different rate than what we get. We get a more discounted rate than what the billing rate is for our development partners. Mayor, did you wanna, did you want to weigh in at all?
Just add in just a bit for Councilmember Isaacson's information sake. Another, besides the policy, Director Thomas is correct, we are likely going to see, continue to see policy updates that need to be made. Our code is extremely outdated, so it's been a long time struggle to get the bandwidth staff-wise to get things updated in line with current state law or current regulations as well as simply just change things that are, are no longer relevant to to what the city does. We have code that's 100 years old that should be deleted. And so that was one of those, you could say missed items over the years where time was not spent on analyzing and putting the investment in to correct that. So that is, that is definitely part of my intention moving forward for the next four years, is continue to work on those policy updates and changes. In addition, you know, there, there could be opportunity for lowering some of those costs, as you'll talk about tonight with Administrator Opel, looking at some overview of staff position requests for the biennium budget, modified a little bit from what we originally proposed in the mid-biennium to kind of a hybrid option from last biennium and this biennium. And if we did have a specific person dedicated to policy on staff, that would probably significantly reduce that portion of the cost for the simple policy. Because you'd have somebody at a much lower salary wage doing some of that legwork before it went to the attorney. So there's lots of, lots of little things to do with it. But we are definitely not alone in having largely legal costs right now. It doesn't really matter the size of your city. It's more about the work that you're doing.
Thanks, yeah. My bigger, oh, sorry. I'm not gonna step on you there. That's where I let you go.
Oh, go ahead. You can finish what you're gonna say.
My biggest, bigger concern is not, you know, we've got a lot of work, we do more work, that's good, right? You know, we get a budget for getting more done, but when I hear we have a contract and we start increasing rates on a contract, it kind of goes against the concept of a contract. And it's, in my experience through life, that's one of the most frustrating things about contracts. You write this contract and they come back, so we're gonna increase our rates. It's like, oh, well, why do we do a contract? You know? That's, that's my bigger concern, this one expressed, to get educated on how we're doing it, but also we could use only two rate hikes in one year, right? It's like, that's kind of, you can't really budget if whoever the service is raises their rates on you. You sign a contract, it's like, we should be able to budget for that, and we should be able to say, hey, yeah, we did more, we did more legal work, but we should have like a cost per line of work done or something, you know, hours of work done, something like that should should tell us so we can budget better as opposed, oh, our rates went up. Now how, how can we put a budget as opposed to come to council and say, oh, give us more money? It's a very, I'm very I'll ask a lot of questions about that, I'll say, and talk people and get educated. It bothers me when we do that in, in general, even at my, my own personal property for that contractor. I'll come back, raise your rates.
Director Thomas?
So thank you, Councilmember Rex, and I forgot to address that question that you asked about the rates. So in our existing contract, it talks about yearly rate increases, and it's usually associated with like a COLA or just below COLA. So we have known through this contract that we were going to have those rate increases. It was built into the contract initially. And, and a lot of our, a lot of contracts that we get and within services have yearly contract hourly rate increases. That is, that is pretty common. I figured, and I'm sorry I didn't address that question right off the bat. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoag.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, so there is a clause in there that after reading through it again, I'm sure I read it a year and a half ago, but after reading through it again, it's, I think it needs some tweaking, and I just don't know when the appropriate time to do it would be, but it's in the termination clause. So I guess my question would be maybe for Director Thomas, should we talk about that now or should we wait? And I mean, this, this is extending this through 2024, correct? So maybe it's the appropriate time to tweak that clause?
Go ahead, Director Thomas.
Just a question.
Yeah, so I don't want to put council in any sort of, you know, position to have to approve a contract this evening. But our contract does end on the 31st of this month, so at a minimum, I would like to make sure that we get that approved tonight. And if council provides direction back to staff, I can work with our city attorney to amend the termination clause and bring that forward as a separate amendment. And that's what I would honestly recommend. Otherwise, we're potentially gonna have a special meeting next week to finalize the contract amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. I like that suggestion. Thank you.
Councilmember Lengel. You're muted.
Okay, my hand button isn't working for some reason. Okay, I just wanted to, to, for Councilmember Isaacson. One, this was, as I call it, BC before council for me. But in the fall of 2018, our mayor had been in office as mayor for a little bit of time there. And she wrote, I think, a very important memo to council explaining the, the, the work of previous administrations, which had remained undone. And it's a, it's a really good memo because it, it sets the stage for a lot of the things that are happening right now. So you asked about something you could read, even though that's a bit old. I still think it says a lot about what the administration, this administration, previous, of course, same mayor inherited, and why our policy agenda, the budget agenda is so packed.
Any other questions or comments about all of this?
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to our second agenda item, which is the Toll Brothers Phase Three Final Pack with Director Lenashevsky.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. Steve Lenashevsky, Public Works. I normally stare at my laptop, but my computer at home has a camera in the middle, so I'm all over the board. This is not a solo show either. Laura and I are working together on this. Just wanted to update folks, advise you just where we are in the processes and then moving forward with this project. So in an effort to keep the computer system working, this is a, let me get my screen share. PowerPoint is just pushed to PDF, so it's not as large. Find the right screen. One maneuver here, apologize. Oh, sorry, it's buried. Oh, man. It is really not happy. I'm sorry. And I love how when I see our police chief's face, it's like laughing at me, you know, when he's got his regular screen up, so he's smiling with me. I'm gonna try one more.
The live image looked exactly like the still shot there.
Let me know if you need me to pull it up.
Well, I don't want to post a PowerPoint because it's so big, it's gonna crash. So of course, I tried to nibble it down to a a PDF and Blue Beam is having a temper tantrum. So I guess I will just open it in PowerPoint, because I do have it up. And I don't like working from home. I don't care what anybody says. Not, not good. Never works. Okay, one more button. I think I'm almost there. Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry, in advance. Now I can't find the right share screen.
This isn't something we can access anywhere, Steve. Is that right?
It's in the folder, but again, it's just too big, I'm afraid. And I, I don't even know where you guys are. There you are.
Is that it, Steve?
I have no idea. What are you seeing?
Can you see it on your screen now? The Public Works.
Yeah, I guess. Yes.
Okay.
The clerk saves the day. So, thank you, clerk. I, I'm gonna back up just a little bit, so everybody knows where we are. So slide two. We called us Walden at Big Rock. It is the, the Easterly phase of Toll Brothers' current project, which Third Avenue, Big Rock, that area, the roundabout, has the homes actually being built. That's phases one and two. As you travel east, in the oval area, it does not encapsulate all of the parcels of land, but again, most of them. So next slide there, please. Another update, you can kind of see masquerading from 2019. Nothing fancy there, so next slide. So this phase incorporates the work along Big Rock Road and then coming in Big Rock Road is the mixed-use and then coming in Big Rock Road is the mixed-use institutional phase. There's three parcels, there's the city park, and then Kitty Corner from the two-acre city park is a one-acre city park. And then you have the residential dwelling units, uh, in Phase Three. Phase Four is forthcoming, this is a four-phase project. So final plating usually is final and definite. And in this case, it's not quite the same, since this is a phased project. Uh, next page. So the bulk of the work is in these dwelling units. Um, a couple items to note, right? The, the major project work, almost on the alignment of this dash line that cuts diagonally through, was the old water main, which had to be rerouted and abandoned down Big Rock, um, and then up Third Avenue, which there are two zones, that is all done. Water systems operating, the frontage, of course, on Big Rock. Um, frontage, of course, with Third Avenue. Um, the parks are where we are at with, like, what's left. Um, there is an affordable housing element for a certain number of units to be mixed in, which they have provided that, uh, for. Um, I think we can go to next slide, Sarah. Just a little kind of better visual. Uh, so a couple of things, putting them where they are. One is, of course, weather and time. Um, the second being strikes. Like, they currently are impacted by some of the concrete work strikes that are ongoing in our region. Not that that has much to do about anything, it's just a fact. And they have brought that to our attention. So, next slide, please, Sarah. I'm gonna do it twice, next one. So you, if you haven't noticed, you, some of you have gone through, um, there's definitely different levels of finish going on. The picture on your left is the one-acre park, which is, which is further back in the subdivision. Uh, and the finished area park is the two-acre park that you're looking at from the interior road adjacent to the commercial properties. The dog just barged in, so next slide. This is some of the schedules they have remaining. Uh, let's see. Two-acre park, so they, they did differentiate this slide, this is the two-acre park. The second slide behind this is for the one-acre park. The majority of the work really is done. They're waiting for some rubberized surfaces, which is, is kind of temperature and moisture sensitive to put down under the zip line, as well as some of the other plantings. Um, the court markups, basketball court, those things aren't super critical. We do want them put down when weather is preferable. Uh, certainly warm is better. And for court markings and the court gets a finished surface that we really want to have, uh, handled in the appropriate time of the year. Um, second phase is really where we're at. Like, you can see that it is reasonably far from being complete. Uh, and that was the four slides back, where it's mostly soil, no, uh, saw, no grass yet, anything to that nature. Which again, isn't a huge issue, but have a park finished with walking paths, sidewalks, play equipment, but yet not accessible, uh, fully. So, we and they are, you know, struggling with timing of installation, knowing they probably could put something together that we don't want put together. So I understand the trade-off of, hey, we could finish your park, but, you know, we don't really want to do it in a sloppy way, which, which we appreciate. Uh, and we want to make sure we can improve what they're putting in. So, we're trying to be amenable. Um, there's no action item at this meeting. Um, you know, between Laura and I, they still have edits to do to the final plot paperwork. So I doubt it would make the following, well, I guess this is the second meeting in a month. A meeting in February of the second is probably reasonable, not necessarily the first, um, which they will be closer. But again, a couple pieces of sidewalk missing here and there. Uh, the bigger issue is just going to be access and how we provide safe now access to a public park. So, we have had talks with contractor and Toll Brothers on how that's gonna look, what our expectations are. I think the bigger thing you may notice if you do go in is the mountains of soil that still remain on the project. Um, so that, that's kind of a, a bigger item. Two, the two sides of that. One, terrible time of year to move material. Uh, two, it's a terrible time of year to place material. And three, they may have too much material in general. So they are trying to utilize that. There's, there are separate piles, there is a little me- method to their madness. Uh, our standards, and Laura can obviously attest, since she's in charge of the planting standards, are very high on material selection. So you have a pile that is large and is screened, it's half-inch screened. It does qualify to be part of the amendment soils that we require to stay onsite and be placed onsite. Uh, then there is some that hasn't been fully screened yet. Uh, we do understand that they may be overstocked, meaning everything they have on site probably is still too much for the finished topsoil needs on the entire project, including Phase Four, which is still forthcoming. So, we are trying to work through them on what, what goes away, what doesn't. I, I mean, I don't have a lot of interest, you know, for sustainability and, you know, our road conditions to truck material off, just to truck material back, that's kind of silly. But I certainly am of the mindset, if they have a known number of what they need and they have excess, I think that probably shouldn't be gone. Um, they do need to complete clearing the city lot, and then, um, I'm not sure, Sarah, which slide to maybe jump back to that shows the overall picture, but the city is, um, taking ownership of the eastern, sou- southeasternmost, uh, lot that is a commercial pad. One, one more, yeah, right there? So, the, yeah, on the bottom of the screen, and I can't use the pointer either, but the bottom right on Big Rock is a mixed-use institutional, that's a city two-acre pad. Across from it, it has Phase C written diagonally on it, which disregard the phase name. C, that's another commercial mixed-use institutional pad. Phase D is another mixed-use institutional pad. And of course, Phase A is one of the parks. So, that will need to be very tiny, um, lights, access, no trucks, no parking, no, no more, uh, job shack, that kind of stuff, which they're working on fairly diligently. And then, they still need to finish some of the grading. So there is a, still some material on the city pad. Uh, obviously, still a lot of material on the pad that's got Phase D written across it, so. That's kind of the status of the site. I mean, they are close, this is a big push. Um, I don't know if Laura, if you want to jump in at this point and share your thoughts. But just know, we're, we're trying to be reasonable. We can bond certain improvements, we certainly don't want to bond a lot of stuff. Um, I do want a definitive plan, like they did, provide the schedule. Uh, I asked on, on Wednesday, and I think they provided that either Friday or yesterday. So they're, they're knowing that we need a lot done, and they are interested in building, you know, on their new lots, so.
Thank you, Steve. I will, can you guys hear me? Sorry, I can't tell with the screen up.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, you know, just to wait a little bit, you know, they've been, you know, the developer has been working really hard for several years on this project. You know, we did talk to him, you know, midsummer, and just, you know, kind of reminded them, like, you know, what the expectations were of, you know, of staff and likely of the council, which is, you know, let's get these parks, you know, finished up. Um, but we've had some very challenging weather, um, over the last several months, um, whether it was super hot during the summer, super wet during the fall, and then obviously a patch of cold, plus, um, just issues in the marketplace, whether it's a strike of, you know, a concrete, or if it's other materials that are taking longer. So I think that's one of the challenges that's really hit them pretty hard. And the items that, you know, Steve and I are probably most concerned about is making sure that we have a finished, um, ready-to-go pad for our parcel for our mixed use, because the, our agreement with them says that they have to complete that and give it to us essentially pad-ready. So we do want to make sure that we get there, and we would recommend that. Um, I think, you know, with the other soils, I think that, you know, we're probably gonna have to work through that. I agree with Steve, you know, we don't want to be trucking off to truck back on, but at the same time, we don't want excess there, and we don't want it to look like a mountain, um, in the mixed-use institutional zone either. So it's gonna be a balancing act. The other item, and I think Steve talked about this too, is, you know, we're also trying to think about public safety and access to these parks, because once you have a final plat, technically, you know, it is, um, it, it's dedicated to the city. So we need to figure out, um, what, how they are open, and making sure that during the construction of home building and the finishing of my, of Phase Four, provides for, um, a safe environment for both the contractor and the community to utilize those, um, those spaces. So I think that's really all I had, you know, to add to it. Um, so, thank you.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Lengel?
Uh, yeah, um, it would be helpful if, well, first question. In Phase Three, uh, how many units are now in Phase Three?
Uh, go ahead, I'll make your notes and answer at once. I don't know if Tom may, I want to say 150, but I don't know.
Okay, yeah, and the, the reason I asked was, um, a while back, uh, there was a calculation where the two phases, um, could actually generate as much as 252 units. And so I'm just trying to check in on that higher number, if that's something that, um, is still potentially going to happen at the site.
Okay, I'll keep looking, any other questions?
Sorry if I don't see someone yet, I'm scrolling here. Does anyone else have questions? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Naplin, thank you.
Yeah, um, I had a comment. Uh, I, I did notice that there was some work done around the basketball court, that I had concerns about the slope and balls rolling into the street. And so I, I, the fence has been put up, and I, um, you know, while it's, it's probably still not ideal, it, uh, addresses, um, one of my primary concerns of safety. So thank you. And, uh, I, I'm still a little bit confused at what you're, uh, planning to ask council for in the next meeting or two, when you said this would come back. According to the schedule of all the, you know, the parts that you showed us, it looks like a lot will not be done by then, and isn't necessarily intended to be done by then. So I'm trying to understand if you plan to bring it back with some kind of promissory note, and will, asking us to approve something before it's done. I, I, it, it does seem like a lot, um, that isn't done. Um, so if, I guess, if there's like some type of a bond, is that our only recourse? Is there a stop work, like, we gave you this deadline, it's not done? Um, we're gonna, you know, no, no additional building permits will be issued. I, I don't really know the process here. And then, finally, about the accessibility to the parks. Uh, I was over there over Christmas break, and Phase Four has a roadway that connects to, um, the neighborhoods over by Rio Vista and the other large, older neighborhood there. And it is a mucky, yucky mess. I don't even know that there's a rocky road. I don't know how they're traversing in there, it's, it's really bad. And I, I suspect people will try to come through there. And the final thing about that park kind of tucks back, there's a, a treehouse that had been there originally from people who had lived on that property. And it's kind of been saved a bit, unless it got torn down in the last couple weeks. Is there a plan there with that little treehouse? On the park property?
I'll double-check, I don't, I don't believe there's anything in our official plan. And I'm not sure if it's still there. Did you hear that? Okay.
Do you know what I'm talking about? Do you know the little treehouse I'm talking about?
I think it's, it's not supposed to stay.
Okay.
It's not, yeah, uh, not. So, uh, back to Councilmember Lengel's question. So 206 is the total unit count for the Phases Three and Four. Um, this phase produces 116 with the nine tracks, and then three mixed-use institutional lots, one of ours included. And that was in the agenda bill on, oops, what date was that? Uh, September 7th was the last time we brought a full, like, a, agenda, a bill update to you folks. So there's that part. Uh, so yeah, next steps, great question. So typically bonding is allowed in a very small way. We don't like to bond a lot, because then you're chasing improvements. Um, so, first question is, yes, whatever they don't finish, they bond. Final lift of asphalt, for instance, we don't actually accept, we want it bonded. We want the road to run, be run on, uh, to identify all the other failures that may arise, and then they fix that towards the end when they bring the final plat. So there are certain things we specifically dictate for our standards that we don't want done. Uh, certainly, we've talked about street trees a, a lot. Um, these are tight sites, we really don't want street trees going in, they're gonna end up busting half of them, and, and it's wasteful. So there are certain things like that. I think the, the reason we're bringing it to you folks is to anticipate likely some of these, which, and then for, you know, new Councilmember Isaacson's sake, this is a very long-lived project, right? Pre-annexation agreement in '06 and '07, development agreement in '07, and updates in '15, '16. Like, this is a longstanding project. So there's a lot of boxes to check. And they're, of course, building city parks in this project. They have a city piece of, uh, property that they're conveying in this project. So there's a lot of expectation that is way over the normal processing of a final plat. I wouldn't make much of a hill of beans out of most other final plats, you know, because, hey, they, they've, they've made the 40 units, they've finished the infrastructure, there's a couple pieces of sidewalk that are broken, cracked, that need to be repaired, little, little things like that. Um, but yeah, this, this, we just want to make sure you folks are in the know on, because we will ask for some bonding, which is allowed. But again, we don't normally like to do it, uh, unless we really have to. And the expectation, in my opinion, like, you know, maybe the one-acre park, which is the northerly one, has a fence around it until we really expect it to be safe. So we are taking on city, and that we probably won't use for a bit, would be, you know, a, a complete, something that could happen. Um, Councilmember Naplin's question, the road to the north from the project center to Glen Karen is not part of the space, so that road will not be passable. So they will make other safeguards to limit access, make sure people know. Um, but as we advised them already, this isn't even platted yet, and you can drive through any day. One, nobody stops you, because it's not marked private property under construction, right? And then, two, people are walking in there all over the place. They've got their kids and their dogs, and they're there, which is fine. Uh, normally Toll is pretty good about leaving the site in a decent way, and people have managed to make their way through, because the, the one larger park is for the most part done, it just has some small features to be added, so. Um, that's kind of where we're at with why we're chatting with you folks. It's, it's just a big project with many layers. You know, back in September, we kind of ironed out how they're gonna handle all the, um, affordable housing and what that document looks like that's included in the plat now. So there's just a lot of things that, you recall, they had an easement on our park for construction. So we took it off the plat, we will make a separate document for construction access easement, but it won't be part of the plat entitling. So there's, there's little nuances that are completely, uh, different than a normal plat. And again, to plat, for anybody who doesn't really go through the process, that is the physical creation of private property that then can be built upon. So we take one big piece, we call it a plat, we chop it up into little pieces, uh, for the code, and then we move forward. So, this, I think, is a 12-page plat document, which is the physical document describing the new meets and balances of the lots. There are typically three. So that's just how large this land, uh, development project is. And it's not even all the phases, it's just one phase of four, so.
Yeah, Steve, I was gonna add, uh, one of the questions that Councilmember Lengel asked too, which was, um, also about the unit count, uh, combined. And so Councilmember Lengel, at some point in the future, there are the, um, mixed-use lots that could accommodate some additional housing units. So we don't know when that will come in, but I would expect that it'll come in in the next couple of years after they build out Phase Three, um, or, or soon there, maybe before or after. They also have a requirement to come in, just like other mixed-use projects, with a development application for non-residential use. So that's one of the items we talked about with them, uh, last year as well. It is a really complex project for the reasons that Steve- It is a really complex project for the reasons that Steve, um, said. Normally, um, you know, kind of, I think what we're trying to do is get kind of a temperature check of the room about, you know, final plotting when we're not quite there on the parks. And we, we told Toll Brothers that we would have a conversation with council. You know, I think that, you know, the first, the larger park is, is substantially complete. There are still items that need to be done. In fact, we're going out as a team tomorrow to start our inspections on the parks because those haven't been completed yet. And so we're anticipating, you know, a punch list from that. So it is a little bit different. Um, you had asked Councilmember Naplin, you know, what kind of, what kind of backstop do we have? Like if we go ahead, you know, we have the bond, right? The bond is a heavy mechanism, like we can call the bond. You can ask Steve and I both how hard it is to call a bond and it is really hard to call a bond and would take us quite a while. So I would hope that, that we'll not ever get to there. But I did talk to, um, our project manager at Toll Brothers and said, you know, we might need a backstop and that might be where, you know, you don't, like you, we'll only let you pull so many permits before, you know, the first park and then, and/or the second park is completed. And they definitely, um, are amenable to that, to that conversation. So it was good that you brought that up. It's actually something that our team was thinking about proactively, you know, upfront. And then we had a conversation with them. They have a lot of interest in getting this final plotted, obviously. Just so everybody knows, like they've, they're pretty much pre-sold with about seventy-five percent of these units already in Phase Three, which is really unheard of. So they definitely, I think, are, are, um, working towards final plat and are trying to get things done. There's a lot of incentive for them to get it done.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Uh, Councilmember Schaefer?
Thank you. Um, yeah, fir- first of all, thanks for the, uh, update on, on this development. And I very much appreciate the complexity, uh, and the oversight, uh, and the related oversight that you guys have done for this project. Uh, my impression is that it's actually done reasonably well in the respect that, that we haven't gotten, you know, a great deal of pushback from the developer, that they've been working with the city with, you know, both you and, you, you, Laura and Steve, uh, all along. I wanted to, to gauge that impression though with reality and actually hear it from, you know, from both Laura and Steve. Does that, is that also your impression or is it otherwise for you?
Yeah, Laura, go first.
Um, I honest, they've been a really good partner to work through this process. You know, we, we push back a lot. They push back. We equally push on each other. And there are sometimes where we stand and, you know, where we stand on the wall and say, yep, no more, right? Because you do have kind of a boundary that you have to keep as well. And that's one of the reasons why we're here, Councilmember Schaefer, is because we've hit a boundary that neither Steve or I have a, um, the ability to do something administratively, that it really has to come from council. And we've been pushing them really hard to get, you know, to get everything completed. And we started having these conversations with them back, you know, late summer when it, in relation to the, you know, final grading, the city parcel, and then finishing up the two parks. So we've been pushing, we've been pushing really hard and so they have, it's been a tremendous amount of work. The final plat on this one's probably the largest, um, project that we've had collaboratively between departments. There's a lot of pieces and parts to it.
Steve?
Yeah, and I would say I totally concur with Laura. Um, they are, they are very reasonable in, uh, contact. They call us when they need something. We call them and we need something. They're, they have been very responsive. So all in all, I do know that part of their struggles on installation is, it's, you know, the size and scope of this project, but it's also the, the relative. They have the same problems getting workers that anybody else does right now. It's even as big as they are. So, you know, they're not immune to the general construction situation in the greater Puget Sound area themselves. So I know they'd like to be further. I would expect normally they could be further, but they're stretched pretty thin. So that's, um, in all fairness, I, I understand. But yeah, like Laura said, you know, we can only go so far until we have to come to you folks and get an approval. And I don't wanna, I've never had to fail a plat. So we just want to make sure we're getting everybody in the know, knowing we're gonna be close or like, not likely done, but we'll, we'll do our best to get, get over the hump. Make sure staff aren't chasing their tails and the developer here can get something done in a reasonable time and in a reasonable way to get all the things they need to provide, provided for. There's a lot.
No, and that, that helps, that helps a lot. Um, the other question I have, uh, what did we end up delaying, the final plat? Now, obviously the, the developer has, you know, has, you know, concerns over that. Do we, the city, have, you know, is there some detriment to, to, uh, the city if we delay that?
I know we don't have legal counsel at these meetings, um, because it is just a work, work session. But, you know, there at some point would be delay. There is a legal timeline. We only have thirty days technically to physically review a plat and either approve or reject, uh, which they are impressing that. But we, we start and stop a clock, um, based on their submittals. So they are still working, you know, on the paperwork side of this, but Parametrics is one of our survey consultants as well as, uh, you know, running under the, the work of Larissa on the project in general. And then, you know, the utilities with Mr. Fisher in the field and those inspections. So, yeah, all in all, I mean, they still are investing, right? I, I don't have to sit on their side, but they've got to report to someone else. So, uh, you know, hopefully we, we can just get to a, an amicable resolution. Like Laura said, they are willing to, because I don't think, and I would imagine Daniel's gonna tell you, hey, the city can't really give a final plat and then say that we're gonna hold their permits, right? That's something if they are gonna honor, that's, that's on them. We, we really can't force that. So there's not a lot we can do to that effect, once we plat something. But again, if they offer something like they said, hey, we'll apply for five or pick a number or whatever they do, that they have some restrictions they set on themselves, great. But yeah, we, you know, once it's a lot of record, it technically is a lot of record. So.
Okay, okay, good. No, thank you.
And I don't want, I hope this isn't coming off, yes, it, it's a big deal, but it's, it's really only a big deal just because the expectation that the city's getting two parks, right, and a commercial pad. So.
Sure.
Normally, we'd be at a place where we, we'd be running this to the finish line with a plat and there'd be a few bonds and that it would be really no different. But this is massive and it has expectations. Then Rio Vista, not to distract from Toll by any means, but Rio Vista is gonna be the same thing. They're working on their park. They're gonna want a final plat soon, just like these guys are. So, you know, they're all watching each other too. So we want to be consistent and, you know, one will garner an understanding of the other from how we, how we get through this one. So.
And I would just add that I, I have talked with our city attorney and I probably didn't share this because it was honestly recently. Um, we would enter into a voluntary agreement with Toll Brothers, uh, you know, you get to pick up, you know, twenty-five permits and then you have, and you don't get any more than that until you get, you know, Park A complete. And then maybe you get up to like seventy-five permits or whatever that is before Part B gets complete. But it is challenging because you have legal lots of record. Once you enter into a final plat, that's why we're here. That's why, that's what makes this so complicated is it, it is a difficult, um, decision. And we don't always have as willing partners or developers. And so our goal at a staff level is to not chase projects once they've been approved either. And that's always a concern, you know, to, to Steve and I because we manage, we both manage teams. And so the more we bond or the more that we allow them to defer something, the harder it is on our working group.
Sure.
Yeah, and, and last thing, I know John's hand is up and Kevin, um, they have installed things that do mean something to us, right? So they have installed utilities. The water system is important. It's critical. They have installed it. It's operating, you know, and again, the return on investment comes towards the end, not the beginning or the middle. So we do appreciate that. With sewer and water, there are not, um, the city does not participate in sharing in those costs like we do with parks and streets and impact fees. So that is part of development life. They did it. They installed it. Great. And there are, you know, we can do recovery contracts which go to the other development potential parcels, but the city does not pay back for sewer and water or storm. So, uh, they have, you know, solid six figures involved with the water system, just getting it running, which, which is real. So, there you go. I think Councilmember Isaacson had his hand up and Kevin.
I just want to chime in really quick and say, everything I've heard so far sounds very reasonable and I'm confident in our director's ability to navigate through this, um, with this developer. And a lot of that just rely on the past relationship with Toll Brothers and that, you know, things have been going pretty smoothly so far. Um, and with that, I will first go Councilmember Isaacson and Administrator Apple. I feel like I saw Councilmembers, um, Naplin's hand up as well. And then we will need to wrap this up so we can move on to our other items. So go ahead, Councilmember Isaacson.
Yeah, um, I think you asked my question about the permits, as long as a voluntary thing, it sounds like something that's very reasonable as well. But it sounds like if we, if you guys as a city, the board already says, and know that these delays and everything are there, are not really their fault, they're doing it and they can, uh, you know, my thoughts out loud are, you know, let's do a reasonable middle ground with them, right? Um, it, you know, is it, give them some schedule relief on the parks? I know we don't want that, but i- if we really believe it isn't their negligence, then I'm open for that too. With, if there's a monetary, um, tie to that, if we have the ability to do that, the legal, it's like, hey, give you this leap, but after that, you're gonna start paying. You know, I'm sure we got some way to do that too. That's an incentive to, here's your relief, but here's the consequence. It's your choice. Just thinking out loud, um, but also letting you know, I, I depend on you guys coming back to us and saying, what do you recommend? Because you're in the trenches with them. We want your relationship, I want your relationship to be good with them as well.
Like Laura said, we'll know quite a bit more tomorrow after we all get back out there, even though we've been on-site here and there. Thank you.
Administrator Apple? You needed.
Just a quick point is bonding is the way that we financially, um, in- in- incur them or tie them to the project. Um, and the problem with bonding is, and I think it was alluded to earlier, is when you bond a project, when it's a simple project, like just putting concrete down or asphalt down, that's an easy remedy. In other words, if they finally just throw up their hands and walk away and say, okay, take the bond, it's not hard for us to get somebody to put a sidewalk in. It's much more complex to do a park to a, to a standard. So we would much rather that they did it. Uh, but we are, you know, I think, uh, Councilmember Naplin mentioned, we don't really have a lot of other options. We don't have a lot of different mechanisms to do. That's what our concern is. And if we have a great relationship with Toll, that's wonderful. The problem is we're setting a precedent which another developer who maybe doesn't, is, isn't such a, uh, an honest actor might, might abuse that in the future and say, well, you bonded, you bonded the park for them or you bonded this thing for them. Why can't you do that for us? So I, we, we, what we're trying to make sure that you guys know as a council is that we're a little concerned about doing that. Um, and we'll try to find a way, but bonding is not our preferred method. Preferred method is that they can get the park, the, to the standard of what we'd like and, and move forward, but we understand.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Naplin, did you have, I thought I saw your hand or did you not have anything anymore?
Further discussion was held, so my questions were answered.
Okay. Um, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and move on to, um, item three, which is the development map update with Director Thomas.
I wish you more success than I had Laura sharing a screen.
There, it took me a minute to unmute myself. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you again. So I will make this a little bit shorter than the last, the last discussion. Every quarter, we update our development map. And so in front of you, you see this, um, this updated map. And by the way, we actually presented this map to the Rotary. I won't go into that, but it was a really good meeting and they asked a ton of questions. So that was really nice. Um, zooming in a little bit. Um, you can see, you know, starting from the north, we still have Willow's Ridge Lot Twenty-One and Twenty-Two. They are actively doing work up at Lot Twenty-One, so that's good news. Um, we're continuing to review the, the Lot Twenty-Two. Um, there's a lot of infrastructure that goes, um, into that project, you know, whether it gets built out or not. I am not, I'm not sure. You know, we'll find out in the future. Um, we also have some other projects that are, you know, approved or not approved yet. When I mean approved, I mean land use entitlement versus building permit. So we always have these color coatings. So Redemption Church, um, will likely bring in their construction trines this summer and do that full remodel, rebuild of that building. Dubal Vet just got their notice of decision today. So if you haven't looked at your email, you'll see that in there. That one's one that we're really excited about because that really is a small hometown, homegrown business that says, I want to be more invested. I'm gonna, I'm gonna grow my business. So we were really excited to see that because it is not easy to do that. It is very expensive right now to develop or redevelop a property. As you know, Thayer, Rio Vista, obviously, um, the project that we just talked about, Sixty-Five Degrees Sunset Court, Baton Creek, those are all under active construction. Um, we'll start to see final plats, obviously, of the ridge at Rio Vista and Sixty-Five Degrees. I think all three of those are gonna hit us, um, before the, the end of the first half of this year. And then likely the other ones we'll see towards the end of the year. So it'll be a busy construction year and then we'll see a busy building permit year as well. We were a little short on building permits that we thought we were gonna get in at the end of that year, but that's partially because, um, there's just an issue within the industry of being able to get, um, the capacity and the supplies and the labor force to complete some of these projects. Um, you can see Dubal Village is actively under construction. They're pretty close to getting all of their foundations in now for all ninety-nine units. Towns One-Four-Three is one of our newer R-twenty projects. They have that active subdivision application and they just brought in their design review application. Um, you can see that these are highlighted over here to the east, which are the annexation areas. And so I don't know, going back to two thousand eighteen, the school district requested a cop plan amendment to take this out of, this area out of our UGAR and we took that out of our UGAR. And now they're getting close to coming in for the actual annexation petition, the ten percent petition. And then the sixty percent petition for the Irma site as part of our cop plan amendment. You'll see this parcel, the school district didn't end up acquiring it. So we'll rezone it back to the UGAR. Let me go to the next page really quick. Uh, these, this is just kind of an update of where we're at on numbers. And this is one of the items that like our land use committee really likes to look at, you know, every quarter to see where we're at. So you can see, um, the, this purple area is, um, not ready for home construction, but you can see the total unit count. That's five hundred and thirty-three units. It's still a lot of units that we have in that entitlement pot, in that entitlement pipeline. Then in this green area, you can see that we had, um, two hundred and forty-three available and, um, we've issued two hundred and forty. That leaves three, right, of our existing, um, parcels that are entitled where they can pick up a permit. That doesn't exclude, you know, necessarily other projects, although the moratorium has also put kind of a pin on that because we're not taking in new development applications unless they have a sewer or water certificate. And this just shows our active site plan reviews, whether they're residential or non-residential. So if, um, I'm pretty much done with the presentation, but I can definitely take, um, questions or comments.
Yeah, thank you for that. Did anyone have any questions for Director Thomas? I am not. Oh, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Lengel.
Just a comment. Um, this will be relevant, uh, later on when we start talking about legislation. When you add all these units together, you're looking at a projected population based on current estimate of our population of somewhere between ten thousand five hundred and forty-three and eleven thousand.
Are cutting in a little close on time for other items. So did anyone else have any burning questions that they want to ask Director Thomas? I'm doing my best to scroll here. So shout out if you, I don't see any.
No, I, I did have my hand up.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Schaefer.
But, uh, it's not really a burning question. Laura, if you can answer this real quick. What, what finally got Willow Ridge, uh, off of dead center? Because that thing is set for, uh, for years, as I understand.
It's a good question. Um, they lost their building permit approval and so they were left with a derelict property that we were gonna have to go through and. property that we were going to have to go through enforcement on, on for removal. And so they went back through a hearing process, um, late last year to get re-entitled and now they're eligible to bring in an actual building permit for those units. So I, that's about all I can say. I, whether those projects finish or not, I am not really sure.
Okay, okay. And the, the new building permits are, have a limited time as well, is that right?
Yes, once they get issued and they have to be issued within a certain amount of time because site pen review is only good for two years with a possible one-year extension. So I'm constantly in angst about any project that's super close to that timeline. And so we actually communicate up to a year in advance and then again, like at 90 days, 60 days, just to try and keep people aware of what's going on. But thank you. That's a good question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so thank you, Director Thomas. That was, uh, fun to watch as always. So with that, we'll move on to a quick final review of the agenda for our upcoming city council retreats. I'm going to share my screen really quickly. The item that was in your packets. It's got here. Um, so we do not have, you know, it's a to be determined date still and the details have not been decided. So don't worry, you didn't miss a doodle bowl. We're not quite there yet. Um, uh, that'll come, we're kind of waiting after, you know, hopefully we get our seventh council member appointed. So typical retreat type agenda, there's a welcome. A question mark on the Colby assessment. It would be fun for our newer council members, um, who didn't have a chance to do that. And it's something that we all recently did to perhaps completed. It'd be a fun icebreaker type thing to look at group dynamics. Um, I'm not sure we would have the actual consultant come out, but maybe just have the analysis and, uh, go through it together. Committee assignments is probably one of the top things we want to get through. Uh, you can send those to me anytime if you have ideas on what committees you're interested in. I sent an email about that, um, last week or, so I think overall vision and goals for Duval. Not small stuff, just really big overarching, uh, goals of something helps membership for always reminds us of that, uh, we should be looking at our priorities for the 2023, 2024 city budget. I specifically put the date in there because obviously we're not going to reshuffle priorities that we already laid out in the current budget we're in. And then finally at the end, but certainly really important is, uh, council procedures review discussion. That's something that committee, um, for council procedures has been working a lot on. And we do have a couple of sections that we really need everyone to chime in about. So I'm not sure we'll really get to the nitty gritty on those, but it would be good to get through some basic concepts to maybe help the committee help formulate those sections and then come back to a cow in the future. So I'll stop sharing. Um, that was the feedback. I think to the best of my knowledge, I got from the last meeting, just want to make sure that looked good to everybody or if anyone had any concerns about that proposed agenda. Not seeing any. So with that all, um, we'll go to Administrator Apple for the overview of the staff position request for the biennium budget.
Top of the screen to get them unmuted. All right. Can you see the, uh, can you see my screen or not?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just let you on. So, um, this is, uh, the, the, coming back to talk about the two positions we'd sort of put on hold or postponed because we wanted to get the other ones on track. Um, and do a little bit more research for, if you look at it, uh, we'll took at the, we'll look at the proposed position options and then the cost of options. The original proposal, uh, from before I arrived, the, the original, the numbers had an ARPA coordinator as an LTE position through the ARPA point of view and a communications manager. The second option that I've kind of come with talking to different members of council, looking at what our needs are and where we're at is, is possibly combining that into a one position, but a full-time position that would, that would last as sort of a management analyst or development coordinator. So a portion of their, of their time and then the other portion being a community engagement manager, which is what I think is a better term than a communications manager, because it's more than just doing social media, it's about doing engagements. Uh, one of that came out part of it from a discussion with the DFA and from, uh, you know, talking about who is going to engage with the Duval, um, cultural commission, you know, who's, who's going to do that? And it, it makes sense to be sort of an engagement manager, an engagement person, uh, versus just a, and a staff member who's been identified. Then the third option is to say, you know, there's actually enough work that for, for this, this position is really two positions. So that was where I came from, to have it as a management analyst, to look to coordinate as an FTE as well as a second position, which is a community engagement manager. If you go into more details from them, uh, the pros and the cons for option one. The pro for the ARPA coordinator is it allows for focus and ARPA and compliance. That was especially more important when it came to, we had some fairly confusing and conflictory, uh, contradictory rules that came out of the interim. Um, ARPA, uh, guidance from treasury and we were worried about compliance. And I think there's, it's a little bit more o- open. So maybe that's, uh, not as much of a pro as it was before. The con for the LTE ARPA is it may not equate to four hours a week. The limits, limits to what secondary roads would be appropriate for an LTE, especially the one that we're not expecting to keep after two or three years. And then in other cities which have, which have contracted ARPA services, that's what we looked into. They've all been connected to existing contracts. So they already have an existing contract with CM to do other things and they're just adding hours on to do ARPA. So we haven't found, I haven't found too many options where that would work really well as a contracted service. So it would really be an LTE, possibly sharing with another city. But again, it comes out to whether that's a, a good whether we get the bang for the buck if we're sharing with someone else. The communications manager portion of that prioritizes communications and community engagement into a primary position. Uh, allows focus engaging commu- uh, community groups, i.e. cultural commission, DFA, et cetera. The con is it's, it's a cost because it's obviously more expensive than having it as a shared position. Option two, single FTE manager analyst, development coordinator, as well as being community engagement manager. Pro supports the directors on larger projects. And so one of the things they can do is ARPA. Uh, another thing they can do is work with the Duval, uh, Duval Cultural Commission. They can work with a lot of things and we can give that as their primary roles. And that's the mixed communication and community engagement is a primary role. Uh, the con is that the workload for having two FOSI, not more than one focus, is that it, that may be more than 40 hours a week. And once we, we look at it, it's hard to take a position that's a single position and split into two full-time positions. Um, just, just from a, a, you know, from a uh, structural thing. Once you hired somebody to do this position, then to hire somebody else to do half of their, you know, to split their, their roles are is harder than just to come into the beginning and say, you know, I think we need two different positions. So, uh, in the future would, it is, is, that's the other con for it. And then the third option is, like I said, to start out with having them as being two different positions. We've seen a lot of, uh, you know, discussions which talk about these different roles as being important for the city moving forward. You know, the pro for the management analysts or development coordinators that can support those directors, that can allow the directors to focus more on their management and allow a management analyst or development coordinator to support policy analysis, to support specific projects. You know, one example had been talking about what is our long-term reserve goals for how much money we should have in reserve funds? That's something which we can, we can throw a management analyst, uh, as a project, a long-term project to, to come up with some numbers. Uh, and that allows then Steve and, and Dana to, to focus on their management point of view. The con is it obviously costs more money. It's, it's a full position in itself and there's an investment in time and training. For a community engagement manager, their poses the same as in the last one, it prioritizes those communications and community engagement into one position. It allows for focus on those community groups. And again, co- the con is it's, it's a full position. If you look at the positions from what Dana's looked at for comps, those two different positions, if you look at management analyst and community engagement manager, they're essentially the type of they're essentially same in cost. All the, all the comps from similar cities, when they talk about having a communications person or a management analyst, they're around $141,000 per year. And that includes essentially their full cost, um, for a salary and benefits. And so it's, it's sort of a straightforward thing. Um, and then initial cost for you one, we just looked at and showed laptop and accessories, test setup, annual phone cost and so forth. We can use the ARPA funds for any of these for things that we can identify as being specific to ARPA. So whether we have an ARPA coordinator or we have a management analyst who we assign to do ARPA work, we can take that money from ARPA for those two years. But obviously if we, if it's a full-time position that we're going to keep on, that's only for the first few years. We would then continue on with them doing other work, which is not necessarily funded. But other things like general building permit, utility funds can be allocated towards it. So if they're working on reserves, uh, for, for water, you know, and saying how much we should have for water and sewer reserves, we can allocate project money for that. And that is really it. I just wanted to give you guys an update. I, I think there was three options. If you go back to the three, you know, my initial look at is I'm not sure if the first option really fits where, where we're going with all the different requirements that we have and all the different priorities that we have for the city. So, you know, the only thing I would ask is if, if we think that that's not really valid anymore, maybe we should just start looking at the other two and then, then I can get you some more data or we can, we can have more discussion on that or we can keep all three. So if you have any questions, I will yield to that.
So I think just given the time we have left, what might be helpful is to just go once around. And I think we can have more discussion about later, but maybe it would help if each of us, um, could just briefly say which of the three options, and it can be multiple ones, it could be all, it could be none, um, that you're interested in, you know, we, you would be interested in hearing more about or discussing more in the future. Would that be helpful to you, Kevin?
Yeah, I just, I think I just want to get it sort of again, a temperature check, you know, are we going the right direction or are we saying, look? It, it just seems like we, we have a lot of times where we say, gosh, if we just had more bandwidth and this is, I think this is what we're trying to figure out is what, how much more bandwidth are, are, do we need to purchase?
Right. Okay. Does anyone want to go first? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Lingle.
There we go. Um, I'm not interested in number one. I, I think, uh, there's a good point that, um, on number two, it, we might be doing too much and not doing it well enough. I see a variation on option number three where it could be, um, 100% management analyst, development coordinator and community engagement manner, manager. We just pick one of those and do it well and look at, um, phasing in possibly in the next budget cycle, one of the others.
Anyone else want to go next? Um, it's hard to see hands sometimes. Uh, Councilmember Hope?
I'm inclined to, um, lean towards item number two, proposal two. Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Sorry about that. Um, who wants to go next? Councilmember Shefer, are you ready to go?
I, I am. Thank you. Uh, right, right now I'm not leaning towards, uh, any of, of these items and let me explain that. First of all, item one, I think ARPA coordinator is, is, uh, just off the table. Uh, unless something happens with the simplification that the Fed stood, uh, I don't think that's, that's needed, uh, at, at all. And in fact, I suspect there may be a few cities out there that actually regret hiring an ARPA coordinator, uh, after this simplification. Option three, two, two new full-time positions. I don't, I don't see that at this time either. Option two, I do have, I, I do have some, you know, some tendencies toward, towards that. Uh, I need to understand better what a management analyst slash development coordinator does. I saw, you know, I saw what's on the slides, obviously, but, but I think we, the council need more information. Even if it's just a bullet list, I, I think we need a better understanding of what that position is. Same for the community engagement manager. I know we've discussed that. Still, I'd like to see a more detailed bullet list of the responsibilities, uh, in that area. And finally, uh, I actually like to see a, uh, a third position, a possibility for a, a part-time third position. Uh, and that would be, uh, economic development manager. I, I think as a
That, that's, that's what's meant by the development coordinator.
It is. Oh, okay. I, I didn't take that.
The idea is that it would help, they could, they could spend part of their time working for development. They could, because the skill sets required for, for analyzing a municipal program or, um, working with development are, are, are not mutually exclusive. It's the same type of person who's coming out of, you know, Evan's school or coming from some experience in a city. They're, they're similar, they're similar in background. They're, they're not. It's not like talking about an engineer and a, you know, and a, um, cultural, you know, like an arts person. They're, 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 they're very similar. They're both management type positions.
Sure. Um, no, that's good to know. And I think that, that just, you know, one's more reason why we need this more detailed list of responsibilities, maybe some explanation along with it to help our, help our understanding.
Thank you. I, and so Councilmember Naplin and Isaacson, does one of you want to go next? And I appreciate everyone keeping it super high level so that we can get that on time.
I'll let Naplin go first if she has a mind, because I'm learning from each of you.
Sure. Yeah, I, for me, uh, number one and number three are off the table. Firstly, I, I'm not ready for two positions and, and there's just some concerns about, I mean, obviously I, I just can't see meeting an ARPA coordinator at this point. Um, the, the shared position, I, I think has more promise and I've brought this up, um, quite a few times before. I, I, I really do see economic development and community engagement being a natural, um, combination of positions. You see it in other cities, entire departments kind of put those together. And, um, I, I, when I see development coordinator, I was thinking more, um, like, uh, housing and building development, not economic development, which I think is a little bit different. So I would really need some clarification on what is meant there. And just on the management analyst, I, I struggle a little bit there because if we're doing policy work, like reserve analysis of what is an appropriate reserve, I, I certainly wouldn't choose a generalist in policy work to do that. That would be something that would come out of the finance department and even potentially, uh, using a financial consultant to give a recommendation on that. So I, I worry a little bit about how much we get out of a policy, a generalist in policy work to, to, to work on policy work for departments when the department is, is really probably the best, um, they, they specialize in those things. So it seems a little strange. So I, I struggle a little bit understanding how that would, how that would work. But, um, so anyways.
We could discuss maybe at a later time. I just want to make sure that we get kind of everyone's general feelings at the moment. And then maybe we could go into more detail down the road. I think this is a lot of good feedback though. Yeah. Oh, you muted yourself. Uh, Councilmember Isaacson, did you want to give some feedback on what you're leaning toward on one, two and three?
Yeah, I lean since we, since the way it was presented to me from Kevin is like, what I'm not hearing is, uh, definite 100%, we have to have two people. I kind of feel like we've kind of been put in this vague area. Well, we may not, you can use one person good in number two and get everything done and we may not fully be able to use someone in, uh, option three. So I'm wondering, is there a hybrid in there? And not to, to create too many options, but is there a hybrid to phase it? You know, can we bring one person on and, and get that person's feedback on the, what we're putting on their plate? Is it too much for them to accomplish everything? And then we bring another person on board, either part-time or an assistant. Uh, that's kind of my thoughts out loud and I just yield to kind of the rest of the council. A lot of people saying, we don't think we need an ARPA right now. So I'd have to just kind of concur with their experience and background on that right now.
You and Administrator Apple, I would say I lean toward option two. Um, and I wish, I know we could all sit here and talk for six hours about this. So I hope, I know that was super fast and we want to talk more, but I hope that at least gives you some good ideas of where we're leaning toward now.
That's good. And we're at seven, just a few.
So with that, we will adjourn our meeting, um, and our council meeting will be on this. So you can stay on here, mute, turn your video off, but then obviously sit tight. Sit tight because we'll be starting again soon. Thanks, everyone.
Bye, everyone. Thanks, Sarah.
So Amy's making us be very efficient here with a thirty second break between meetings.
Doing a great job.
Absolutely, she is.
All right, we're at seven oh three, we'll give everybody a couple more minutes to finish vibrate, some refreshing their beverages or whatever needs to be done. Forgive me in advance if I start losing track or speaking gibberish. Uh, I've been going strong since seven this morning, so. Uh, I'm a little brain dead and will try and do my best to keep it on track, so feel free to step in if I get something wrong, guys.
Well, you be, start speaking gibberish, you're gonna have to show us what kind of beverage you're drinking.
I'm drinking water. The wine doesn't come till after.
Well, that'll motivate you to get done sooner.
Not me that needs motivation, Councilmember. Depending early depends on every, or leaving or ending early depends on everyone else. And Mayor Pretend is doing a great job of managing that schedule for that hour and a half.
That we barely squeaked by on that one, that was.
It's tough.
That was really hard. Well, I think especially that last one, we could have talked a long time on, so um, yeah.
It only takes a minute to get something done when there's only a minute left.
Yeah, exactly. I need that on a poster.
All right, we're bidding for Councilmember Hope, and then we can get going.
I'm sorry, just had the video off.
No problem, thank you. And Clerk, are you ready?
I am ready.
All right, with that, I would like to call the Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two Duval City Council meeting to order. At seven oh six P M. Clerk, would you please take the role, or I'm sorry, first off. Uh, would you please join me in the flag salute once the flag shows up on the screen? I put, do the flag. Thank you. And now Clerk, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Isaacson.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer. Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
I'm sorry, Mayor Pretend. Uh, Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lengel.
Here.
And Mayor Okerlander.
Here. Right, we have a quorum. Um, so with that, uh, does anyone have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved, McHenry.
Second, Councilmember Isaacson.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this evening's council agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and then we will now move on to comments from the audience. This is a slight deviation from our previous um agendas. But our new clerk is trying to mix things up a little bit to help us run a little more smoothly. Um, so if there are any members of the audience that would like to speak, uh, please raise your hand virtually. And the clerk will unmute you and you'll be able to uh speak for three minutes to any topic you wish. We just ask you provide your name and address. And uh, before we get to that, Clerk, did we receive any written comments this evening?
Uh, no, we did not re- receive any written comments, and I have one person's hand raised.
Excellent, thank you. All right, and it looks like uh Dr. Anthony Smith from our Riverview School District. Uh, so you may unmute yourself and provide three minutes of public comment.
Thanks, it'll take less than that, I really appreciate it. So uh, I sent in just three topics and I pretty much read the sentences I wrote. I want to thank all the elected officials that serve on the council and for their great partnership uh with the Riverview School District. And all your service to the community is stunning, and especially in these times. And combined with all the projects you're managing on every single corner in part of the city. Um, second, we have two levy propositions uh that are for your replacement levies coming up. On educational programs and operations and uh technology capital projects. And so there's tons of information on our website, if you want to look at that, I know that several of you already have. And then uh three, I just wanted to um encourage the city to continue to look at human services. And uh public meeting space, and I know we're right in the middle of COVID and Omicron and all the probably more variants coming up. But as you're having conversations in the future about facilities, just hoping that uh the city continues to provide uh facilities uh for for rent. Uh, for community groups and organizations, many of which have had a difficult time meeting during this time with the, you know, facilities closed. And you know, same extends to our school district as well, so that's all I wanted to say. And once again, that my biggest message I wanted to share is thank you for everything you do, um, and especially during these times. Take care.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and thank you for all that you do to keep all the kids in our community safe as they go to school during this really challenging time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Okay, we're not seeing any hands raised, so we will go ahead and move on to approval of the consent agenda. Uh, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved, McHenry.
Second, Schaefer.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, moving on to schedule items, first up's mayor's report. There's going to be, uh, we'll, we'll have some legislative discussion, but I wanted to first um just give you a quick update of meetings that have been occurring. Uh, first of all, I did have a first meeting with the new um twelfth district representative, Mike Steele. Um, he is from Shalane, uh, he will be representing all uh King County residents east of the Duval City line. Within the next sixty days, um, he is eager to uh have session be over with and start planning field trips and get to learn. Our area in the city as well as the unincorporated areas of King County in his new legislative district. Uh, additionally, I had the opportunity to meet with Senator Brad Hawkins, uh, cannot remember if I reported on that at the last meeting or not. Uh, but now I've completed all introductory meetings with all three twelfth districts legislators. So um, I think we're actually going to see a lot of positives, and I'm looking forward to everyone that has not met them previously. Getting the opportunity to meet them, get to know them, and begin our collaborative work together. Um, the um Association of Washington Cities, for those that don't know, uh, is hosting a weekly legislative call on Friday afternoons. Uh, you do have to sign up for it each week. Um, I attended last week. Uh, the first week of session is always a blur. Um, of course, lots of focus on uh the housing bills as well as the criminal justice reform fixes to the legislation that was passed last year. Um, that legislation is moving forward quickly and um will hopefully see some benefits and and clarity. For our law enforcement in the very near future. Uh, I also uh had the opportunity to attend uh the now infrequent Bloomberg Mayor's Group Meeting uh last week. Regarding the status of COVID and Omicron um in the country. Uh, for anyone that would like the slides, feel free to let me know, I'm happy to send them to you. Uh, the bottom line is, there's hope, but everything is up in the air. Uh, they expect hospitalizations to continue to rise over the next few weeks, um, and deaths to increase um as well. Um, but that. Is primarily in the unvaccinated population, vaccinated and boosted, uh, continue to have less severe infection than those that haven't been. Um, so good news, bad news. Um, and as we all know, our numbers here continue to be extraordinarily high. Uh, we're at a point now where many, many people are not going to get PCR tested because they test positive at home. Um, which is pretty uh pretty accurate confirmation of an active infection. Um. Tomorrow, the Sound Cities Association Board will meet and elect new leadership. I believe I shared with council um that I'm giving up my role on the executive board this year as secretary. Uh, timing has changed and I I cannot guarantee the um commitment to that role. Uh, and otherwise, I would have likely moved into the vice president role. Um, and our incoming president will actually be um Angela Bernie, the mayor of Redmond. Uh, is expected, the incoming vice president is expected to be Jan Molinaro uh from the city of Etonclaw. Um, so both of those folks will be representing us very well uh on the ADPC board and uh out in the region. Um, the Association of Washington Cities uh board meeting uh will be held next Tuesday, um, so I will be in attendance at that. Um, and then um, I did have the unusual but really fun opportunity to speak on a panel. Uh, with Councilmember Toby Nixon from Kirkland, uh, Councilmember Jane McNeil from Bothell, and Councilmember. Um, Deshawn Quinn from Tukwila to a a class of graduate students at the Evans University of Washington Evans School last week. Um, and so thank you to the council members that provided feedback on what you thought uh contributed to good staff work. Uh, we had a really open, candid conversation, um, and it was a lot of fun. And uh I frequently get to be on panels with three of those folks. Um, and they really are uh the epitome of good public servants in our region, and it's always an honor to uh be um speaking to groups with them. Um, next up, getting more into the legislative meat of things. Um, so uh Land Use Committee is well aware, but this morning I did provide testimony on House Bill seventeen eighty-two. And Senate Bill fifty-six seventy. Um, I was unable to do live testimony, so my testimony was written and submitted uh through their portal, which I did focus send to. Um, the council as a whole. Of note, uh, this bill is the middle housing bill that would require jurisdictions of ten thousand or above to allow duplexes. Pretty much anywhere. And uh would could potentially significantly increase our um, our population numbers. As well as take away our local control and push us significantly over our growth targets. Um, that are approved from the county um and then incorporated into our comprehensive plan. Um, testimony did focus a lot on the fact that we are an un, a non-contiguous UJ city without access to a major freeway. And without access to transit, um, and highlighting um really the, the biggest issue for us. And our community, which is transportation. Um, and this bill would not just affect us, it'd affect every city in the state over ten thousand. Which we will be at soon to Councilmember Linger's, Lengel's point in the committee of the whole. Um, I did send a a draft letter with much more detail in it to council this afternoon after um those committee hearings were held. Um, I wanted to do a quick check in with folks, um, did you have time to scan it before the meeting tonight? It was late, but uh, okay, I'm seeing head nods. Um, does anyone have objections to signing on to that letter? Okay, Councilmember Napland?
Um, I don't know if you're gonna ask, it wasn't an objection, I just had a couple comments.
Okay.
Right, is it an all or nothing, or?
No, it's not an all or nothing. Um, if you have edits, um, please feel free to to speak them now and we can incorporate them into the letter.
Okay, sure. Um, the one thing I, I I love the letter, it's fantastic, you did a great job. Um, and uh, the one thing that I, I wasn't sure I might have missed it, because I read it quickly, was the concern about displacement. I feel like we have some affordable areas left in our city and the areas most at risk for um. This causing um displacement in our community, it are those affordable areas. And so I I just feel like we're not going to accomplish, we're just going to drive up the price of um the existing affordable homes. Where they'll be redeveloped, so that's kind of a uh long way around, and maybe you have something in there and I didn't see it. But the other thing is you, you mentioned a number of units that we've built in the last four years. I think it might also be helpful to mention how many we have in the pipeline. And and maybe you could even focus on uh under construction, because if you look at the units under construction. Um, which would be ones who are, have active um clear and grade and are moving towards building out. I think it's something like uh almost three hundred, let's see, three hundred and sixty-seven homes. At least in clear and gray. So I I think maybe mentioning something like that would be helpful for them to understand. Um. And then on the bus service, we do have one bus, but I think it might be important to point out that it's a ninety minute interval and it doesn't run on weekends. So it's, it's not just, you know, it, we don't even really have adequate, a single run of bus service. So yeah, those are just some ideas, but otherwise, I just think it's a really great letter. Um, the only other thing I would add is I attend, I dialed in to the hearing. And there were actually three other bills that were being discussed, and I'm I'm assuming you've heard. And and they're honestly equally concerning. I don't know if they have as much potential with moving forward. But I would say much of what was said in this letter regarding HB seventeen eighty-two could be said about its HB twenty twenty. Um, yes, HB twelve thirty-two and HB nineteen eighty-one, a lot of the same comments would apply. So I don't know if we, we would want uh to also address that at at some point.
Um, I think first off, um, to address the last part, absolutely. Um, this was the the quick focus and the quick turnaround time today. Um, I started uh drafting comments at seven A M, so. It was a very quick turnaround, and to your point on displacement of existing affordable housing, um, that is an excellent point. So um, if you have a suggested line, please email that to Director Thomas and I um after this meeting. And um, I do like, definitely like the suggestion of adding the, in the pipeline and under construction. Um, because that really highlights that we are in fact meeting our comprehensive plan goals, doing what we're supposed to be doing. Um, and that this is a, would be a huge burden um on all of us. Um, the one thing I I would just say about that, the, the S V T line is that um for the legislature. Especially looking at people outside of our forty-fifth and fifth legislative district. I would recommend that we keep focused on the metro community transit connection. Um, because that's the one that will get the workers from Sultan to Monroe to Duval to Redmond. Um, versus uh the S V T run is great. Versus the SVT run is great for during the day and mostly medical appointments and those types of things. And we are working on the SVGA side on a larger transportation strategy with that. So with, I'm sorry, council member Napoli, did you?
Oh yeah, it is the metro route that I believe doesn't run on weekends and only runs every ninety minutes, but I, I could be wrong, but.
Yes. Yeah, we only have one route. So yes, we can actually runs on weekends point. I was thinking you were referring to the SVT line.
I didn't count that one because it's not really a connector into the employment hub areas, so.
Pretty confident when the two twenty-four comes on board, it'll be hourly service instead of ninety minutes. So that's in the pipeline and about to be approved. So I don't know that we'd want to say ninety minutes if that's not accurate. But it is a very good point for further discussion. And I think as folks also noted in the letter that I'm offering to meet with council members and the legislators to discuss these concerns at more length. And then to council member Napoli's point, getting on to a little bit, most of the bills that are on our tracking list at the moment are holdovers from the last session that still have legs. So to council member's point, cannot talk, obviously, council member Napoli's point, there are a few of those housing bills. And we can send those out to you. I think that the highest focus was today with seventeen eighty-two because that looks like it's going to move and it's going to move fast. There's definitely still a lot of work to do on twelve thirty-two and I'm happy and some of the others, and I really would be happy to put together another letter this week to get information on that as well. And if we could have tentative agreement that everybody agrees to send letters out, then we can put them out for your signature within the next forty-eight hours. Any objections? I'm seeing good head nods. So, okay, we'll move forward with that. And then wanted to give just a quick update on the Snoqualmie Valley Government Association Transportation Committee. So the mayors of Duval, Snoqualmie, North Bend, Carnation and a member of the Snoqualmie Tribe Tribal Council have been meeting. We've met twice so far. Last week we had Amy Biggs and Sawa Raphael out to talk a little bit more about their existing plans for expansion, their needs on the transit side of our discussion. And we're looking for data from them that we can use to supplement and put into talking points and potentially some position papers on moving things forward as far as expansion of transit in the valley and trying to brainstorm some unique ideas. We've definitely have tentative agreement, which of course all of this will be brought to the Snoqualmie Valley Governments Association as a whole on the twenty-sixth, I believe it is. But definitely working on continuing to get funding for Highway eighteen, continuing to get work on funding for our two oh three highway quarter as well as adding in elements to the two or three quarter study that were not included in highways, the Highway two oh two study that was recently done by the state. Another issue that did come up is the pass-through traffic issue. I don't have my specific note handy, but off, offhand. But I can't remember if it's North Bend or Snoqualmie has done a similar to study to what we did on two oh three and eighty percent of their traffic is passed through and not from their community. Just anecdotally, luckily I get to travel and go lots of places and hear lots of folks. I met someone from Sky Comish this weekend, moved to Sky Comish during the pandemic and is a Microsoft employee and is now commuting from Sky Comish to Redmond or Bellevue, depending on which office that person's going to. The joke was, do you take five twenty-two? And the answer was, oh no, we divert through Highway two oh three and go on Novelty Hill or Woodenville Duval Road to get to Bellevue or Redmond. So it continues to be an issue. One additional item that has come up legislatively, and I did miss it on the bill intros and already have an email out to our forty-fifth and fifth district legislators. The Senator Hawkins from the twelfth district did drop a bill that did receive a hearing in the Senate Transportation Committee yesterday that really is in line with what we're asking for for two oh three. And it is an actual bill asking for a Highway two oh two or Highway two corridor study from Monroe to Wenatchee. It's desperately needed, but at the same time it ties directly into two oh three and the needs. So I have emailed our legislators to see if this session, they think a better approach might be having one of them, if they are willing to sponsor the bill and drop the bill and us work on getting the bill passed and then included in the budget versus simply included as a proviso in the budget. So we'll see what their response is to that. Also wanted to let you know there are a couple of bills regarding our water treatment plans and water system plans that bring climate change mitigation into the GMA goals. And through discussions with Director Leniszewski, he doesn't think that's going to be a big impact to us and that we'll be fine with that, that we already have most of those elements in. The other, I think, I think that is the brief update for the second week of session. Ms. Thomas or Mr. Leniszewski, did I miss anything? Okay, and just remembered saying Chief Tabak, there is one more. That's House Bill eighteen forty-five. I will be at least sending written testimony, if not live testimony in support. That is a bill that would provide a grant program to get our body camera programs off the ground and helping to fund those. So there is concern, of course, if it's a one-time grant program, how do we sustain, how do we sustain the funding? At the same time, at some point they will be, I have no doubt that they will be mandated and I know it's a direction that we all want to go as a city. And so I think expressing our support as a small city will hopefully provide some benefit to that. And with that, that concludes the legislative portion of my report. And does anybody have any follow-up questions? I see Director Thomas's hand is up. Did I miss one?
Yes, sorry, Mary, I didn't get my hand up fast enough. And so we did actually receive an urgent request today, right before this meeting on another preemption bill of building permits. And so I will be looking at that in the morning with our building official and we'll be providing comments back to AWC tomorrow. So thank you.
And upon Director Thomas's interest or recommendation, happy to testify in that as well. And if I can't, I will reach out to a member of the Land Use Committee to see if someone is able to provide testimony at that hearing. All right. So next we are moving on.
Mayor, sorry, I had my hand up virtually. You probably couldn't see it. Just real quick for you, my planning commission tablet is giving me some IT challenges. That's the only place I have access to my Duval email. So I forward it to my Gmail, your letter. I'll do some edits to it and send it to you. It's so I didn't want to go to your junk mail. It'll be John, JohnIsaacson@gmail.com will come to you with that.
Great. Thank you, council member. I appreciate that. All right, moving on, we have on the agenda scheduled items, King County Fire District forty-five. But I believe that we had that report last week. So we will not be having that this week. Is that correct, clerk? Okay, perfect. Now moving on to scheduled items, number three, council committee reports. First up is finance and administration.
I guess I could go ahead and give that update if that's okay with the committee members. So we met the week before last and so we made it through quite a few sections of the procurement policy. And it was a really productive meeting and I'm just so thankful to council member Lingle and Napoli for how much work you guys have done on this. I'm just new to this all and catching up. So it was really great. Our next meeting is this Thursday. We're going to continue in the same course and just keep working through it together. And so I also went in and reorganized the committee folder because I could not help myself. And so it's all chronological and there's a current draft version that should be easy for everyone to access if you ever just want to take a peek and see where we're at currently. Or if you have questions, just let one of us know.
Thank you, Mayor Partem. Moving on to land use.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have a land use committee meeting tomorrow morning at ten thirty. And on our agenda is talking about the Duval Foundation of Arts following up on a request for a facilitation with the city and council and DFA. We have a legislative update and an update on Open Gov and an update on policy work.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to public safety.
Um, no, oh, go, go ahead.
I was just gonna say we have a meeting next week. Yeah, I wasn't sure who was gonna do that since council member Brunicki has gone.
That's all I was gonna say.
Thank you. And the Public Works Committee.
Thank you. I will take that too. So we went through a lot of items. We had a discussion about the Big Rock Park Community Survey. We have a follow-up meeting this Friday where we're going to go through the questions and just discuss that some more. We had updates on the sewer wastewater treatment plant project as well as the Third Avenue design. And talked about King County Parks Levy Grant applications. Just, I think they're submitted for active parks and still working on river corridors. And got an update on sorry, it echoed weird, so I apologize if there was something weird on my end. And the exterior, if you've noticed City Hall and the police station look amazing. That painting is done. There was some flashing repair. I think it was on City Hall was done, but it was actually done in-house, so it saved a bit of money, which is great. And then, let's see, I think the only other thing we talked about was, oh, just some on-call support construction development and the final plaits for Toll Brothers and Rio Vista, but we talked about one of those earlier at the council. So that's it for now.
Thank you. Next up is are the ad hoc committees. Do either of the council procedures and update code of conduct or the human services grant applications have an update for the group tonight? Council member Hope?
Our next council procedures code of conduct meeting is January twenty-fourth at twelve thirty.
So, and Mayor?
And I just had a quick update for the human services grant. And so initially we were thinking that council member Hogan and myself would need to for sure be on that and we still could, but I think what it is, is the deadline is February fifteenth for the applications to be submitted. So we'll probably by the time they come around for committee to look at, we would have had our retreat and be able to reshuffle committees as needed. So I just wanted to let all the council members know that if somebody's interested in that committee, that there's still a possibility to serve on it this year. But anyways, invitations to apply for the twenty twenty-two human services grants have been sent. It's on the website, Facebook page. And yeah, like I said before, the deadline is February fifteenth.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Partem. And next up, we have other council reports. Are there any council members that would like to speak individually to your activities this week? Council member Napoli and then Mayor Partem McHenry.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I attended the Outdoor Recreation Action Team meeting and I always loved that meeting. The presentation this time came from the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust and they were presenting on a plan that they are working on. It's called the National Heritage Area Management Plan and Duval happens to be within that area. And I, I found their goals pretty exciting and they align with a lot of our goals. Just, I'll just throw out a few. I, I don't have the draft. They haven't released it yet, but I'm, I took notes. The, the goals that popped out to me were promoting regional tourism, encouraging ecological restoration, increasing visibility for communities that are in the area, growing funding opportunities and education outreach. And during the meeting, they mentioned that Oregon cities and other municipalities potentially could become partners in this plan and be listed as a partner in the plan. And I, I don't know exactly how we would evaluate it formally or if it would require some type of motion or agenda bill, but it, it seems like something that we might be interested in since the goals are very similar to a lot of our own priorities. My, the information I have regarding when we will start to see an actual draft is that there's going to be a mayor's briefing. And Mayor O'Polander, you should be getting an invitation probably any day. January twenty-seventh, they're, they're gonna have a briefing for the mayor. So that's something I'm interested in. If you do get a draft, I'd love to see it. And perhaps the rest of council would and then just to consider becoming listed as a partner in that plan.
Excellent. Thank you, council member Napoli. And I did already see, received the invite. So Mayor Polly from Isquoz hosting, so definitely looking forward to that meeting. And thank you for attending Outdoor Recreation Team. It's difficult. We all have a lot of conflicting meetings internally during that time. So it's what, once every six months that I actually even get to attend? And that's one of the fun ones. So it's always really sad when you miss the fun ones. Council member Hope? Oh, I'm sorry. It was, it was council member or Mayor Partem McHenry that had raised her hand.
You took her by surprise. I wanted to see what she was gonna say. So I've got ahead and I've scheduled a council chat for February the eighth from five to six PM. It's virtual, just given everything going on. I think that's the easiest. I've had a couple council members reach out that they're interested. So for anyone on in the audience who doesn't know what that is, it's, we realize as a council that we, not everyone can attend these council meetings and then you know, if you provide public comments, it, we can't really go back and forth and discuss what you're bringing up. So having these council chats is just a casual way to meet up with people in the community so we can have a deeper level of conversation and engagement. And so with that too, I wanted to say this time around, just to try and get the word out a little more besides on social media. I'm gonna probably try and create a QR code and maybe print it out and see if some local businesses or coffee shops wouldn't mind putting it up so that when people are getting a coffee, they see some information about it and are able to scan and get the info on their phone so they remember to call in. Just one idea I have, I'm open to others and I have not scheduled any more dates yet because I'm hoping that some other council members maybe want to step up and schedule some of their own each month. So maybe we can all take turns. So I'm not just picking the dates all the time. And that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Partem. Love the idea of the QR code. So hopefully it'll drum some more people up. And moving on to our city administrator report, Mr. Apple.
Excellent. Let me pull it up. Share. Do, do, do. It's a short one today. Hopefully you can see it. Really just two, two things real quick. One is the administrative staff met with the salary compensation survey consultant last week. It's been a little bit of a grind. She's a little bit behind where we'd like her to be, but she has made some progress and there's some way forward. And then we're gonna meet again this week to talk about some of the things she wanted some feedback and I just want to make sure that we're giving her the right feedback or we're doing it all together. And then the mayor, Mayor Partem and administration will also be meeting with a facilitator this week to discuss possible work with Duval Foundation for the Arts. It's something that was alluded to earlier about the facilitated discussion. And so we have meetings set up, I think it's on Friday, to, to find out what they've, you know, to, to, to sort of lay the groundwork and see what the, what, what they recommend from the facilitator's point of view. And that's it. Aside from questions, if you have any.
Does council have any questions for Administrator Apple? Council member Lingle?
Let's see, am I on mute? No, I'm not on mute. Just one comment on the DFA item. One of the reasons I've been a little hesitant on this, I understand there's potential upside, but one, one is that it is their land and their project is intertwined with the development agreement. And I want to be sure that we don't have any quasi judicial compromising depending on what the agenda of that discussion might be. And so that's something maybe someone could check out, make sure there's no compromising of that. Because I wouldn't want to step in a way that does that. I mean, there's a host of, I mean, the development agreements on that project and their involvement is so vast. Yeah, I, I just would like some assurance there's no quasi judicial issue.
Thank you. Council member Hope?
Thank you for bringing up the DFA. Thank you for bringing up the DFA facilitation again. I really think that it would be nice to have some sort of an agenda with it. And a, like, an outcome-based proposal, what we're gonna talk about, because I just think that, you know, I think that we all wanna support the arts. But I think that it would be really great to, I guess, to have some good outcome with this facilitation.
That's why we're hopefully talking to the facilitator to see if we can, if they feel that there's a way that we can have a an outcome that is measurable or identifiable, because if they say, look, I don't, they're like in the situation, say, there's just, we don't see any reason for a facility discussion, we don't see any outcomes, it's not, you know, that would be something, but hopefully they can, you know, that's, we're working with a facilitator, I think Laura has worked with before, and we're hoping that that's, this will, this will get what you're asking for, which is some sort of an agenda for the discussion and some sort of outcomes.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, we will go on to new business. Our first item is Agenda Bill 22-04, Interview of City Council Position Candidates and Potential Appointment. This one, the Mayor Portem gets the opportunity to leave, lead as the President of Council. As the mayor does not have a role in the appointment process. So Mayor Portem, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Clerk, I don't know how you wanted to do this, if you just wanted to pick the order in which the applicants were received, to bring one in at a time.
So originally, we thought we were gonna be able to do breakout rooms, and it turns out we won't be able to do that because of the way the meeting was set up. And so what we're gonna do is, what I plan to do is have, in the order that the applications were received. We would ask the questions, and I would ask, so that would mean Robert Smith would go first. And then after he's done, he will, I'm not sure if you wanted him to leave the meeting or stay on the meeting. I don't know if it matters too much if he stays on the meeting.
I think once they've been interviewed, it probably doesn't matter. It's just before they've been interviewed, yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right too. Okay, so then, so we would ask that Jason Walker and Ron Mercer, if you could drop off the Zoom meeting at this point, and then I will call you on the phone when it's your turn after Robert Smith is, has finished. And I, and there they go. Okay, thank you, guys. Well, they can't hear me, but anyway. I'm going to promote Robert now to a panelist, and then you can ask your questions. And then they have two minutes to give a statement after the questions are over. And I'll time that two minutes, just to make sure nobody goes over there a lot of times. So I am promoting Robert now.
Hi, Robert. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
For this interview, basically, I will ask you a few questions, and there's no back and forth. I just ask it, you give your answer, and then we'll move on to the next question. So for our first, what is your strategy for managing conflict if it were to arise with a fellow council member, mayor, or staff member?
The way I handle conflict, it's kinda like how I handle with my family. I like to talk to people about the perspective and what is really the root of the issue. And to understand their perspective and to try to come to a middle ground. It's not, you know, an authoritative, you know, conflict. Like, I know what's best, you must do it my way. It's more of like, let's come together and share these ideas and see if we can come to an agreement. And sometimes it is best to just say, you know, we don't meet eye to eye, but that's okay, and we'll just move on to the next thing.
Thank you. What challenges do you expect to encounter in this position, and how would you be able to utilize your skills and experience if selected?
Well, I think, because I am new to the city council, I think I would have a learning curve to understand the nuances of the local government. And working with that and gain on a committee and understanding how things work can help, you know, me understand things. And then move on to, you know, to develop policy and vote on what's accordingly what needs to move on.
Thank you. What do you believe are the most urgent issues the city is facing currently, and how would you like to see the council address them?
Well, I find it's very ironic that tonight there were some of the issues that were already raised. Transportation is one. The traffic between Duval and Redmond going up Nobley Hill, as we all experiences increasingly every single year. I think that's a huge concern. Also, another concern is, as I spoke with many of you, is the connectivity of the internet here in the city. You know, with a lot of people working from home nowadays, especially with a lot of residents who work in the tech industry. They need some really good high bandwidth fiber optic internet in order to do their work. And it can also be attractive to bring business into Duval, so that, you know, you know, because the internet is here to stay and is only getting bigger and better. And I think that's one thing that we can work on is with the infrastructure bill that was passed by President Biden. And then we can maybe talk with the state of Washington and the governor and figure out how we can maybe allocate some funds to help bring better internet to the city.
Thank you. So now comes the part for the two-minute statement. So is there anything you'd like to say about yourself that you feel is important for us to consider before we conclude your interview?
Sure, I just want to say, you know, in our one-on-one interviews, I discussed, you know, why I wanted to join the city council. And my passion for the politics and my recent participation in the River View School District reopening committee reignite my interest into joining, participating in community things. And what I learned from that committee is that it's imperative to listen to others' perspectives on a variety of different topics. And gaining the knowledge of these experts allowed me to fully understand the complexity of what was at our task at hand to bring our students back safely. So if I'm appointed to the city council, I will bring this mentality forefront in all of the discussions, as I think that we as humans learn more from each other. And so I just wanna thank you guys very much for this opportunity to finally see all of you, because I've talked to most of you over the phone. And I truly enjoyed all of our conversations, and I hope that you do select me as the next member of the city council.
Thank you, Robert. I think our clerk will be putting you back as an attendee. You can stay on if you'd like, and then we will get our next applicant on here.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trying to figure out how to make him an attendee again. Oh, okay, remove. Hopefully, when I remove you, it does not drop you off, I think.
If it does, I can just rejoin the meeting. Okay, Sarah?
We'll see what happens.
Okay.
Oh wait, it says, once removed, Robert Smith will not be able to rejoin the webinar, so we don't wanna do that. Oh, I got it. I got it. I got it. Changeable to attendee. There it is. Okay, there. All right. And so now I will call. I will call Jason Walker, so give me one moment and I'll do that.
Need some elevator music or something.
Just wanted to say hi since we had a break. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Daniel.
I'm here.
And Daniel is now gonna sing show tunes.
Yeah.
Not in my, my skill set.
You could hum elevator music though, right?
That, that I can do, yeah.
While we're, while we're on an unofficial break, could you guys name yourself in your? I just noticed that I wasn't named, so I just did that as well. I think I forgot about it this meeting. So that way, anybody that's interviewing knows who we are. Thank you. Laura, do you mean to put that we're a council member, or, because my name is always on there. Okay, so you mean?
Dash council, if you're a council member, yeah.
How do we do that?
If you hover over your name in the attendees or the panelist list, there's mute, and then there's more, and you click on that, and it's renamed. Yeah.
I just follow the mayor's lead. She says, Amy. Oh, she just changed it.
That's a really good idea, though, because I go to meetings and I'm like, who are they with again? What is their role? And I usually take notes at the beginning of the meeting to keep track of who everyone is, but it still gets very confusing.
Mr. Walker is here now.
Hi, Jason. Thanks for joining us. Make sure you're on. Can you hear us okay?
Look, you're still on mute.
Yeah, he was unmuted for a second. Jason, are you able to unmute and can you hear us okay?
I can hear you okay. I'm having trouble starting my video.
Okay.
We'll see what happens.
Okay, do you want us to wait a moment for the video?
I don't know if it's gonna get any better. I have pretty serious internet lagging issues. Not unlike most people in Duval, so, but I'm trying to start video. It will not initiate, so could we do audio if that's okay?
Yeah, we can get started, because sometimes honestly, if the, if the internet's unstable, it might just not work very well. So basically, I'll just ask you some questions. There's not really a back and forth. You just answer, and then we'll move on to the next question. So the first question is, what is your strategy for managing conflict if it were to arise with a fellow council member, mayor, or staff member?
Yeah, that's, that's interesting. I have to think back, what was it, seven and a half years or so on council? I think it's best to know people a bit and kinda help them out. And strategy just seems kind of top-down. And for something like that, I think it's helpful to observe people and what they're trying to do, because I think you're all doing wonderful, by the way. It's great to see you all. But to, to work with you all kind of with, with the context around you and observe what's going on. And if there's something I can do to help you out or to kinda see yourself, if it's not you that you see when you're so passionate about the things you're trying to do. And, and let you know that there's, you know, there's, there's, there's better ways that you can achieve your, your goals. And to really just kind of understand that you're all doing this out of your hearts and committing your own time, and it's hard. But, you know, it's something we can, we can do to work together better, and we can have a lot of fun. So I think that's the first thing. Think of it as having fun. And think about those things that you want to achieve, and then, you know, what, what do you have as individual strengths to, you know, make those things occur? So I don't know. You have to know people a bit to get to that point. But I think that's what's helpful for me in managing people throughout my life and making them into standalone folks that can handle the world. And so with that, I'll just leave, I'll leave the question.
Thank you. What challenges do you expect to encounter in this position, and how would you be able to utilize your skills and experience if selected?
Challenges to expect? Well, who would expect that we were having Zoom meetings and city council and the virus and all the changes? And I hope you're all well. A lot of people are not doing so great, and I've had tremendous hardships over the last few years. So foreseeing, foreseeing what may occur is, you know, that, that's really takes a good understanding of history, and then a good understanding of all the, the influences around you, and then what may occur in the future. We do business, you know, modeling and programming. I do other types of modeling and, you know, the types of environmental science. But to know the context is really important, okay, and to keep your, your eyes and ears open and use all your senses. I think you are all very engaged, active regionally, and I think that's very important, that you're, you are aware of what potential threats there are, but also you hear about opportunities and good things, and that's how, you know, you all watch out for each other. So, you know, that's, that's the first, I think, key part. What was the second part of the question?
Um, how would you be able to utilize your skills and experience if selected?
I don't know, the best I can, I guess. Skills and experience, I guess I should talk about that. I don't like to talk about myself too much, but especially in a public meeting, but my, my personal life, skills and experience. Okay, experience. So with the city, I started as a planning commissioner. I served five years on the planning commission. I was chair for two years. From there, I went to city council, was on city council total of like around seven and a half, I guess, give or take. I can't recall exact. And during that time, I was Mayor Portem as well, so congratulations, Mayor Portem McHenry. I'm still trying to start my camera, but it's not working. But, yeah, that, how do I apply what I know? I think same, I think rule applies. It's just to, I think, to know the folks, to kinda know the, the lay of the land. And, and to address what other, you know, what issues might come about. It's, to me, it's, it's both knowledge and understanding, but also kind of that intuition you get over time. Where you may not need to make a long deliberation or have a, a big mind bender to really come to the right conclusion right away. That's why, you know, firemen know to go into a burning building and know what to do, because they're, they're trained and they have that experience. Not that I've ever done anything like that. And I don't know if, you know, I would, but anyway, I think that it just comes from experience, and that builds the, the tools within yourself. And that forms the instincts that you use. I'm an environmental planner. I'm a landscape architect and environmental science and a planner. And I have a lot of experience working for cities. That's what I do as a consultant. I help cities write codes, primarily, primarily land use related. And other policies, recently updating parks, master plans, and also overall park plans for, for two major cities. Finished one and I'm starting another. That's been really fun. Then working with our civil engineering group and improving infrastructure and critical infrastructure, like bridges that are failing. I've got two bridges that are failing that I'm. I'm, I'm a consultant on, on one side of it, and I'm, I was the project manager on the other one to, to get these bridges implemented. There's so much crumbling infrastructure and all around us, and Duval's no different than that. So I don't know, there's just a few things. I would like to help a bit more. I've got some time. This is the time of year where I do my yearly plan, and I can kind of foresee what I wanna get into for the year. And just like to offer, you know, if you need help, I think I saw that the ad late at night, the night before, I just kind of impulsively applied, just to throw my name in the hat. See how you're doing. It was wonderful to chat with you all, and really, that's about it.
Thank you. What do you believe are the most urgent issues the city is facing currently, and how would you like to see the council address them?
Urgent issues the city is facing, in terms of what you think the city is. I always say the city's not a monolith. The city is comprised of many, many people with, you know, trying to work and live and raise families or do whatever they're needing to do. So, and then you have to think about like what the, what the needs are and why they're different now, and there's a lot of things that are different now. To me, technology is a problem. That's apparent, because I can't start my video camera. I think it's, I think it is related to my internet speed. I think, I think really, the, having a better technology connectivity is a key bottleneck. Absolute barrier to improving as a community, and I think it would, we would be better off during this still continuing emergency with better connectivity. I drive still to my office in Everett to use the internet about three days a week, just because I can't do the business-type functions I need to do, which are high bandwidth need. If I had to pick one singular issue, I'd probably choose the technology and that we need to focus together and do what we can. I know we don't own the internet. That's not a public utility. But, but I know we've had contact with those providers. I've invited them to come talk with council. It's been very informative. We can understand what they're doing to build capacity, and I think if anything, most, that, if anything, most people would need in this community would be good, robust. connectivity and with the world at this time. You know, I do video meetings with my parents who are very old and it's changed, that's wonderful to do with at this point in their life and we have so many different ways we use technology, that if we can just do maybe that one thing, that would probably have the most impact.
Thank you. So now you can have two minutes, if there is, is there anything you'd like to say about yourself that you feel is important for us to consider before we conclude your interview?
Important, no, I don't have anything important to say at this time. I don't know, it's just been wonderful to chat with you all. I always, always like to check in with you once in a while and I don't want to be, you know, I didn't want to be part of all the, whatever you're doing, but it was just always great to chat with you when you did call me and it's great to meet the the new council members and, you know, over the phone and chat with them as well. I think you've got a great group here and I think you have more potential I think than any council I've been exposed to in the past, so I think you have wonderful potential, if you can work together and have fun doing it. And in 10 years from now, you want to look back in this time and think about all the things you've achieved. You don't want to be thinking about the quagmire what it took to get there, but you'll have these gems out there that you'll be very proud of. And I want you to find those now and work through those, these issues. I know each of you have, they're all different, I'm not going to divulge any, I'm not going to break any unwritten rule. But it was just great to see you all and that's all, and maybe I'll see you again soon, we'll see.
Well, thank you so much. Our clerk is going to move you back over as an attendee, you're welcome to stay on at this point, so thanks again for your time tonight.
I'll sign off, thank you.
Okay, and then our last person is Ron Mercer, who I will now be calling.
Thank you.
Mayor, could you answer a question? Is it, don't, doesn't the new council member, if we appoint someone, get sworn in tonight?
Yes. So I know that the clerk was provided all of the candidates with detailed information on the process this evening.
Okay, he'll be joining now.
Hi Ron, are you able to hear us okay and unmute?
Second, I think I'm unmuted.
And did you want to turn your video on as well? I don't think it's a requirement if you really don't want to, but I
No, I can, it's a little, you never know where you're staring in terms of. So I'm at a standing desk, so apologies if I move around a little bit, but I think this will work if, looks like I'm okay, so I have a little bit of cold, I heard Amy say, or hopefully it's just a cold, but if I'm a little hoarse, excuse that as well, so.
Well, thanks for joining us tonight, so I just have some questions to ask and there's no back and forth, I just ask them, you answer and then we move on to the next question. So with that, my first question is, what is your strategy for managing conflict if it were to arise with a fellow council member, mayor, or staff member?
So I think there's a couple of ways you can handle conflict and I'll sort of touch on both of them and broaden your question a little bit. I think there's things that you can do proactively to seed the ground to minimize conflict and a lot of that, you know, even, it sounds like the council is doing a little bit, but understanding the personalities and work styles of individual council members. I think the other, you know, key element is really working off a set of, you know, shared goals and a vision, I think that also helps minimize conflict if everyone knows that they're sort of marching toward the same outcomes. I know in my own work environment, we've really pivoted to sort of a position of trust, trust the good intentions or trust the best intentions, so so assume the folks are coming from a good place and then there's a lot of things I think you can do in terms of how you engage and interact in terms of using data and taking customers, I'm customer service, taking folks on the journey with you to the outcome, but but I think the broader, you know, themes in terms of de-escalation or sort of winding down, I think that in fact is part of it and if everyone is operating from that sort of common point of view, that helps, but I do think there's a certain amount of self-reflection, did I do something to trigger a certain response, did I ask the question the wrong way? I think one thing I found really effective is saying, can you explain it to me versus why did you, sort of just pivoting the question, because then it becomes an educational opportunity. Rather than sort of a confrontation. I think the other approach is really, and I know a lot of people think of compromise as a dirty word, but really I think you have to operate from, there's, trying to think of the term that's used, everything's not a zero-sum game, so I think there are oftentimes, even if they're very small wins, sort of someone will come away and sort of step back, so that's one of the things in terms of, that can really create the conflict in the first place, is that either someone feels you're trying to undermine them to get your way and I think if you can can kind of get on the same side or show that you have a shared point of view or essentially, as I said, pivot the conversation. The other time, you know, another effective technique sometimes is just to say, to stop talking. I know in, particularly in the Zoom calls where and I don't know the mechanisms exactly, neck is you have in place, but you know, allowing everyone to have this sort of a say before the next person just pausing and essentially giving an opportunity to step away, I think the the techniques also vary a little bit in terms of if you need to make a decision in the moment or if it's more of a discussion, such as in meeting the whole where you're trying to not necessarily land an outcome, but really learn together and so, you know, again, I think the other part is, the key is just understanding that someone's trigger may not be your trigger and really, it's also just okay to apologize, sort of step back, you know, sorry, I didn't mean to come on too strong. You know, we can put this on hold and talk about it another time in terms of tabling the item, the other is, you know, I really need a little more information. This is an area I'm familiar with, or maybe, you know, I'm a little confused, can we talk about it afterwards? So I think there's a lot of ways that you can de-escalate. But those are a couple that have been effective for me and in work, you know, just kind of knowing when to fold. And there's oftentimes, you know, an opportunity for a second bite at the apple, you can revisit the conversation.
Thank you. What challenges do you expect to encounter in this position and how would you be able to utilize your skills and experience if selected?
Challenges. I'm going to ask sort of a follow-up, but I otherwise I'll answer it if there's not sort of back and forth, but really the challenge in terms of the city's challenges or just challenges in general. And I'm happy to answer either, either way.
Just, you know, if it's written, just any challenges you would expect to encounter.
Sure, you know, I'll just sort of take the broad swath first and then, and then there's some more targeted challenges, I think. You know, I've served eight years on the planning commission and learned quite a bit about land use in sort of that recommendation capacity. There are lots of elements, you know, I've been involved in budgeting and forecasting in a corporate environment, but there are a lot of and actually this came up in some of my conversations with the various council members, but, you know, learning a new playbook in terms of acronyms and processes and procedures. Those aren't necessarily challenges, but there's some time associated with, with sort of educating yourself for the role. You know, there's opportunities there, I think to mentor or either find a mentor within the council or, you know, there's an opportunity in terms of, I think, sometimes joining some of the larger regional councils. Albeit not going too fast, but to basically use that as a, as a platform to sort of learn more about the overall processes. The other is, you know, I just think you know, expanding the network of contacts. I know a lot of you just from various interactions on the the planning commission, but just again, you know, some of the things we answered in your last question in terms of how different personalities and how you work together and your working style, that takes a little bit of time to learn. Learning the staff and again, their expertise, I know there's been both internal turnover and change in roles, people in new roles, but again, there's an opportunity there, I think, sometimes to sort of learn together in terms of what's new. From a community perspective, I think some of the broader challenges are a lot of the ones we've been talking about for a while in terms of the council or what the community views as challenges and I think those are essentially managing, managing growth in terms of the providing services and capacity, I think that's one where there are more tools in the toolbox, at least around some of the city services and working with the builders in terms of the funding sources. I find one of the ironic elements of the growth conversation is a lot of the things that the community values in terms of connectedness and sidewalks and road improvements are also tied to the to the growth projects, but then they have their own set of impacts in terms of traffic and density and the ability to scale schools. So growth, I think, is, it continues to be a challenge that the council I know is really focused on, both from a short-term mitigation with things like the wastewater treatment expansion, but then longer-term investments in the regional infrastructure. Traffic is another one closely tied to growth that is a more challenging one for the community, given that the broader arterial network is not under the direct influence of the city, so, you know, whether it's Novelty Hill 522, the flooding on 124th. Those are things we have to either partner at a regional level or I think advocate with the legislature. But even then, many of those are longer-term opportunities, so there's really key to communicate back to the the community, I think there are also, I'm trying to hit, there's a relatively long list, but you know, maintaining the small town, town culture. The other one, which is probably a connection point on a lot of these are really around both the internal services in terms of, I know the city went, just recently went through some contract negotiations, but really just the broader conversation of essentially recruiting and retention of employees in terms of both from a funding source, in terms of how we compensate those employees, but also, you know, mitigating stress, making sure that there's a work-life balance. And given that we often don't have the capacity to scale at the same rate as some larger cities. And I think that's probably my fourth one is really from a challenge is sort of making the bandwidth or freeing up the space within the existing staff to do the longer-term strategic and financial planning, so both for I think I'd heard reserved mentioned, but not necessarily that more just, you know, being able to deal with unfunded mandates, being able to deal with the unknown unknowns like COVID. It's probably not the last time something will happen. Longer-term planning around climate impacts, whether it is around water source, water quality, access to water. You know, temperature impacts, particularly lower income where air conditioning might be a requirement in terms of, and today they can't fund that, so you know, how the city could assist with those types of things. And then really, I think, just the broader cultural themes in terms of how you do all those things and still sort of keep Duval the way it is and special for the community and that's, I think, what ends up driving a lot of the the feedback from the community in terms of things that they're concerned about, is they often don't move at the same speed at which the community would like to see them addressed.
Thank you. What do you believe are the most urgent issues the city is facing currently and how would you like to see the council address them?
So I kind of somewhat answered my own question, I guess, there a little bit, but you know, as I said, there's a number of connected but disperse, I guess, challenges, I think one of is just the broader conversation around growth and there was some earlier conversation around that the bill's coming down in terms of around density. I know there are bills in terms of energy sources. We're starting to see an inflection point around, you know, EVs, probably take a couple of years, but in terms of, you know, how we deploy charging stations locally or within our local grid. You know, the 5G system, so a lot of those are things that are part of not even necessarily with growth, just the modernization and the of infrastructure that sort of need to be dealt with. The challenge with each of those, though, is there's a finite pool of resources and staff within the community to do that work, so. Again, I kind of come back to my planning pieces. Carving out the time to really stage that work and I knew we do some of it today via the CIP and the tip in terms of a high-level stack rank. Which is ultimately tied back to, how are we going to fund it? You know, whether that is around matching grants, whether it is around ARPA funds. Whether it is in terms of regional partnerships, whether it is you know, levies, which we haven't leveraged often in our community to really accomplish those various objectives, but from a challenge perspective, I think it's really starting to define what that city vision is, whether it is beyond the comp plan, which sort of is a lot of the mandated work we have to do, but what we want to do in a community. And then tie that back to specific target dates, potential funding streams. I know there are also specific targets that are triggers that come into play at certain population growth, whether that is the density change, but even more so the mandates around or the regulations around consolidating city services and I know that's been a conversation for years in terms of dealing with the surplus property, acquiring property, acquiring the reserve funds, doing the planning and design work. Which won't necessarily need to happen tomorrow, but much like the the wastewater capacity may come sooner than everyone's planned for, so again, that's a big one for me and then I think the regional transportation impacts, I know there is work being done on a, on a smaller scale, but the things we can control in terms of beyond traffic calming and safety improvements for those main arterial corridors, whether it's the two or three work where I think the mainstream investments improved some of the safety of that space. But as I said, the more intractable challenges around limited ability to expand Novelty Hill pass-through traffic from 522, the growth that we're seeing in outline communities that are essentially impacting our own growth without occurring in the city limits, so whether that's Sultan or Carnation. And I know a lot of those conversations are already taking place through the regional councils. But I guess my point is that those are items that will continue to challenge the city and really are the things that drive civic engagement, not necessarily always for the right reasons, because they're directly impacted, I think one of the there's not a lot of benefits of COVID, but I think one of them is, for at least a period of time, we didn't have the commuting and for some of the larger employees, there's still a predominant portion of the population is work from home, but when that starts to change, I think we're going to see additional community feedback and concern about what we can do about traffic in this, sort of the shorter and the long-term. Trying to think if I've, some other ones I'd touch on that I hadn't touched on previously, I've had so many good, great conversations with all of you, I've touched on some of these themes already. But, you know, and I guess one of the other ones would just be the broader issue just around some of the, how we stage and manage growth and communicate that back to the community. How we stage and manage growth and communicate that back to the community. So there's there's what we do in terms of capacity and planning. Implementation. Number of those have work backs, but even for the. The projects that are are in the pipeline today. And I think Laura and Troy have done a a great job in terms of. Promoting that through the Planning Commission and putting it up on the website. I I think a lot of the community is still not. Necessarily aware of of what's already happening. And and I'll use the example even of the sewer moratorium. You know, there's a an expectation somewhat that that's going to sort of slow growth or put the brakes on growth for, you know, six to nine plus months. For the design, the bidding, and then the build out. But the reality is there's already a lot in the pipeline. So just the engage, how we engage with the community, how we can communicate. The status of projects and even getting. Beyond the the periodic surveys, which I think are a great touch point, but really getting out there and and Amy, the. What you've done in terms of the the. The the meetings, just to meet with the community, the the mining of the Facebook post to really. Not necessarily drive the decisions, because there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Regardless of community feedback, just to run the city and and and. And do the work, but but to incorporate that feedback into our. How we prioritize the the city's specific initiatives. So.
Thank you. So the last thing is you get two minutes. So if there's anything you'd like to say about yourself that you feel is important for us to consider before we conclude your interview, go ahead.
Sure. And I I just wrote saying it's really brief, just to sort of as much for you, but I wanted to thank the mayor or council for your thoughtful questions. Little less, little more stressful than the one on one interviews, but. Which I particularly enjoyed. So I also wanted to thank you for the one on one conversations we had over the past couple of days. Super insightful for me and and hopefully helpful for you. When I moved to the valley some twenty years ago, it was for the qualities captured in the slogan, Small Town Real Life. Words that anchor the discussions the community continues to have today. How to meet the evolving wants and needs, retain the rural character, manage future growth. Navigate a range of legislative, economic and regional influences that sometimes run counter to all of the above. If chosen this evening, I promise to bring my best self to the position. This includes putting in the work to ramp up quickly on policy. Asking the tough questions, being accessible and doing my part to foster a healthy working relationship. With the mayor, council, city manager and staff that is inclusive, collaborative and respectful. I'm excited about Duvall's future and very much hope to be your newest council member. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron, for your time tonight. I know our clerk's gonna move you back over to the attendees. You're welcome to stay on now. And I think, Mayor, I hand this back over to you because we'll be going into executive session, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Portem. I believe double check the agenda for how many minutes we have scheduled. We have fifteen minutes scheduled. For executive session pursuant to RCW forty two dot three zero dot one one zero sub H. To evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elected office. If we do need to extend beyond fifteen minutes, I will send the clerk a message and she will announce that to the public. Once council has had a discussion of qualifications. Council will come out and vote by matrix to appoint the next council member. That council member will be sworn in this evening and be able to participate in the remainder of the meeting tonight. So very exciting. And with that, we will be in executive session until eight forty.
Sarah.
Yeah.
Is there another executive session that I'm supposed to be in? That this thing get put in it, or are you still building it?
Um, Laura Thomas should have sent you. A link to the exec session. See, it's a separate Zoom meeting. And she may have sent it to your your city address.
Let me, I didn't realize it was a separate link either. I thought it was just kind of happened. Yeah, Laura didn't send it to my Gmail. Do you have it? Can you forward it to me?
Don't have, but I'm gonna text her.
And I'm gonna look in my. Like I was saying earlier, I have IT challenges. With my surface.
Yeah, that's that's unfortunate. We gotta fix that.
Hi. I'm looking on my email. You said it was from Laura? Laura Thomas, I have. Housing. When did she send it? Executive session, there it is, okay.
Oh, you found it?
I found it. I'm going to afford it to myself so I can use it. That's my problem is I can't use my.
Your surface?
Yeah, well, I can, but it there's some things that it works with and some that it doesn't. This is all the growing pains of learning how this stuff works anyway.
Yep, that's normal.
Course is not working.
Maybe I can have Laura kind of invite you into the meeting.
Let me just hit this link on my service and see if I can get it to go through. There's Laura. Or I'm trying to get in via that executive link and it's just. My my service is giving me issues. And when I hit launch meeting, it just it just spins.
Okay, well, you have, you can't join two meetings at once, so you have to be out of this meeting to go to that.
That would be part of the issue. Okay.
So. If you have an issue. Jump back in this meeting and. You will call in instead, but you can't be in two meetings at once. I was trying to figure out why I could hear. You in the executive session. That's because council member, one of the council members had two different computers going. I'm like, you can't do that. I can hear what you're talking about.
Oh, cool. Well, let me jump out of here. Hear me and then I'll, they know I'm trying to.
You can't be into it once.
All right.
Two separate computers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I am on two different computers. I'm on my surface and my.
Yeah, so you need to get out of this one and go exclusively into that one. And if you can't, then jump back on and we'll get you in via phone.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sarah. And do you want to pause on Facebook? Or are you gonna keep streaming? No, you're probably right. I'll pause on Facebook. Thanks. And then usually we will post on like a little. Sorry, a word document that says council is in. Executive session from. That started at this, expected to end, and then we just keep adding on to it. Okay. I'm sorry, I I forgot. I totally forgot to even say, hey. Oh, no, no. No, that's all right. And it was really weird because I was in that other session and I could hear. Hello, I would like to announce that the Duvall City Council will be in executive session for an additional five minutes. Pursuant to RCW forty two dot three zero dot one one zero H. To evaluate candidates for office. And we expect that they will resume the meeting at eight forty five PM. Thank you. I'm announcing that the city council requires three more minutes to deliberate an executive session. Pursuant to forty RCW forty two point three zero point one one zero H, and they will be back at eight forty eight PM.
You know. For for years, I've been hoping that Mr. Mercer would run for council because of his balance, his perspective. His knowledge and the way he approaches issues. And so from a personal's perspective, lots of great candidates this evening. I have not met Robert Smith, but we'll be calling him and and checking his interest on planning commission. But I am so thrilled to have you. As our newest colleague in the city of Duval, in elected office, council member Mercer. So welcome to the team and we look forward to all the good work you're gonna do that over the next couple of years.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. It's a you're on a big forty three inch monitor, so I feel like I'm right there with you.
Excellent. And someday we'll be meeting in person again. So with that, we have a four new items of business on the agenda and we will go ahead and get moving with that.
Mayor Oberlander?
Yes.
Apologize to interrupt. So we were not recording, accidentally did not hit, you know, record on that, which isn't a legal issue or anything because we were broadcasting. But just for posterity, perhaps you could simply just summarize what just happened for. For everyone.
Absolutely. So were we not recording during the council voting?
Um.
Was it?
We were not. Yeah, we were not recording. We were broadcasting but not recording.
Okay, excellent. All right. So with that, what did just occur during live broadcast? Is that our clerk brought up as an Excel spreadsheet with the list of the three candidates. Individually, each council member spoke to before their vote. And declared who they were voting for out of the three candidates to appoint to the Duval City Council. Every single council member cast their vote for Ron Mercer. And I just officially. Issued the oath of office to Mr. Mercer, and he is now an official Duval City Council member. And is now seated for the remainder of the meeting and for his two year term. And we are moving on to Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero five. So thank you, Clerk McMillan, for catching that and having me add that to the record. So Director Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and members of our community that are still with us this evening. This evening I have a couple, I think I have most of the items left on the agenda. So the first one is the ILA update, this Naquadmi Valley Housing Needs Assessment. Which is Agenda Bill twenty two dash oh five. All cities have now reviewed the ILA, so we're excited about that. There were some clarifications that were needed, and so that will be now drafted. And so I have listed both of them. And that is that North Bend, as the gatekeeper, will include the cities in review and selection of a consultant. The group thought that that was important, that we get to be included in that process. And then that the grant dollars will go directly to North Bend based on completed work. Really, those are the tasks. So those are the two items that came up. From all of the city's reviews. Our next step is for the ILA to come back to council for approval. At the February first meeting, if everything goes well. Does council have any questions?
Councilmember Napoli.
It's three questions. I'll be really quick. In one of the sections, it talks about North Bend selecting the consultant. Is that something that anyone from our city would have wanted to be on a selection committee, or is that just being? Managed completely by North Bend? And still.
Sorry, keep asking of your questions first and then.
And then is there a possibility or is there a scenario where the amount exceeds the pooled resources and is there a provision for that? I didn't see it. And then finally, this was in the scope and maybe I should have caught it earlier, but it talks about developing strategies to plan for and accommodate. Existing and projected needs of all economic segments of the community. And I'm just wondering, as they develop these strategies, are they taking into consideration our growth targets?
So thank you, Councilmember Napoli. Those are good questions. So the section that we're actually going to amend. Is the section that you're talking about. It has not been yet amended, so you'll see in the notes that we agree that. We need to include language so that it's not just North Bend that makes that that final decision. They'll consult. With the remainder of count of the cities. But they chose to not go with a selection committee. We had a discussion about that because I'm used to a more robust process. But in North Bend, they don't have as robust of a process as we do. So what we said is, okay, well, we still want to be included. To be able to, you know, to go through that. Your other question about. The scope of work. And whether or not we're going to account for our growth targets in that, absolutely, we will. I mean, that's that is something that's key to this. Because we've already softly accepted our numbers when we said, you know, we don't want, this is about what we want to go in the range of. I guess the one good thing to have us being in that second grouping of grants is that with the changes that are happening potentially at the legislature. That we'll be able to be poised to respond to those. And included in our housing needs assessment and in our housing action plan.
And then what if the amount exceeds the pooled resources?
Oh, yes, thank you. If that happens, then we would either have to come back and talk, well, we'd have to come back and talk as cities because. We only have twenty thousand dollars of city Duval resources set for that. And so if the RFP comes back and they're requesting additional dollars. Then cities would have to decide if they want to go back out for RFP or if we try to negotiate it to what our budget is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero six, Professional Services Contract for City Attorney for Discussion and or Decision. Director Thomas.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council and members of our community. And I forgot our newest council member as well. And. Some of these items, just so you know, Councilmember Mercer, I was almost Planning Commissioner Mercer, but Councilmember Mercer. Some of these items, we've been working on for a little for a little while, so they might be more summarized. But I'll do my best to kind of do the bigger picture on this. So our city attorney contract amendment, Agenda Bill twenty two oh six, the city issued an RFP in two thousand eighteen for city attorney services. Ogden, Murphy and Wallace received that contract in July of two thousand twenty. We did set an expiration in that contract, and that was January thirty first of this year was really just to kind of. Do a touch in, see how we were doing. The proposed contract amendment as proposed would go through the end of two thousand twenty four. The contract amendment will necessitate a budget amendment. We are over our biennium budget. This also includes a three and a half percent increase in hourly rates. This is similar to the, you know, the existing contract where it had. A rate change every year. Staff will be working with our city attorney to break out some additional attorney costs into a few other lines, including human resources. And then one for council meetings as well. And based on our discussion at the Cow, I did add in the total cost for two thousand twenty one. Essentially by the department because that was a discussion point. So I wanted to make sure that we brought that up. And then I added quickly the percentage increase as well. And then the discussion that we're going to look at breaking out into. Not necessarily departments, but some other areas that we're interested in. Does council have any questions?
Is council ready to move this forward this evening?
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve Agenda Bill AB twenty two dash zero six professional services contract for city attorney.
Sorry, I have my virtual hand up. I didn't key them like their counselor Mahog. If I could ask a question first for someone seconds.
We will take the second and then we can have discussion, councilmember.
Okay, thanks.
Second, McHenry.
Right now it's been moved in second. Councilmember Isaacson, please proceed.
Yeah, so now I've lost my train of thought. I apologize. The the contracted increase in in pay, how much does this budget amendment exceed that by? Like, how far off were we in in the planned increase in pay? Or is this really and truly, we didn't miss it? This is just more work that was done.
I don't, I wouldn't say that we that we missed anything per se in the budget process for the biennium. What we didn't necessarily expect, I think, is a prolonged pandemic and some additional policy work that came out of the pandemic and then also through human resources as well, plus some other policy work that we're doing and other planning, not just planning per se and community development, but in other departments as well. So it the the increase, the three and a percent increase, we're not doing a budget amendment because of that. We're doing it because we've done more work than we anticipated.
Okay, that's what I got from the Cal Conference. I just wanted to confirm I've walked away with that clarity. Clarity. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero six professional services contract for city attorney, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero seven, resolution approving temporary sign permit fee waiver for discussion and or decision. Director Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers of our community again. This is a policy that we have been utilizing during the pandemic, one of those items that goes in front of our city attorney for review, whether it's a resolution or ordinance. We have had, sorry, I'm gonna cough. Excuse me. We have had people and businesses utilize our temporary fee waiver for signage. It's been a fairly successful program. We're actually going to do some business education on this particular policy during this year so that we can try and get everybody in and get their their permits that they might want the next year or two because temporary permits for signage do last for a couple of years. We've had good feedback when our community has called and talked about, can I get a permit for this? And how much will it be? And when we get to say, you know what, as part of our COVID relief and recovery policies, this permit will not cost you anything. It'll be free. And so that even though it's less than a hundred dollars, I think it's just one less thing that our business community needs to think about. So we're recommending that council approve this fee waiver again for, you know, fortunately or unfortunately for a third time. And council can take action on this item this evening if it chooses or it could wait even until the next meeting. It's up to council.
This seems like a no brainer. Is council ready to move this evening? And if so, happy to entertain a motion.
This is Councilmember Schaefer. I move we approve AB twenty two dash oh seven.
Second, Napoli.
It's been moved in second to approve Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero seven, res- raise sign permit fee waiver. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Final item of new business this evening is Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero eight, a resolution approving temporary special event permit processing fee waiver for discussion and or decision. Director Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers of our community. Agenda Bill twenty two oh eight is to a special event permit processing fee waiver. Council previously waived this fee in 2020, but did not go through the process to waive it in 2021. We didn't have a lot of events that year, I think, obviously because of the pandemic, but we're really hopeful that we'll see some additional community engagement. For example, one of the items that needs a special event permit as an example would be Duval Day Sand Blast, even like the Rotary Hearts, they require a special event permit. They're using, for example, they're using city infrastructure in the right of way and it's technically signage and a special event all at the same time. It stays up for several weeks and we want to make sure that we can try and provide a little bit of relief to our partners, whether it's our business partners or it's our nonprofit partners. The fee honestly really isn't that much. It's $25, but we still feel that it's a good decision for us to continue to do during the pandemic. There are other fees that can be charged as part of a special event process and those can get waived by a committee. If you remember about two months ago, Director Mason brought forward an ordinance that made us a minor amendment to the processing section of this and the fee section. And it only ended up modifying the fee section and we had said that we need to come back and update the processing section. And while this doesn't do this, I just wanted you to know that while we're waiving the permit processing fee, the city also has the ability at a committee level to also waive those types of fees as well. But this one is specific to the permit fee. Staff is recommending approval of this temporary policy through the end of 2022. Council does have the opportunity again to approve this piece of legislation this evening.
All right, is council ready to move forward on this item this evening? Head nods and I'd be happy to.
Move, we approve AB twenty two dash zero eight, Councilmember Schaefer, by the way, special event permit processing fee waiver.
Second, McHenry.
It's been moved in second and to approve Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero eight, resolution approving temporary special event permit processing fee waiver. Is there any discussion or questions? City Attorney Kenny.
Sorry, just one thing caught my eye. I think that this fee was just raised from 25 to $50. It was 25 last year and then the fee resolution has it at 50. Very minor point. Sorry, I just wanted to point that out. I think, I think that did happen. And if I'm misremembering, please correct me, but I'm trying to pull that up right now.
So Attorney Kenny, if could we just simply pull out the $25 language and be good?
Yeah, the the action item I don't think is going to change at all because it's a waiver of of the fee. I just more wanted people to know what they were waving and I'm pretty sure it's it's $50 as of 2022.
Is that a problem for anyone on council? Seeing all head nods of no, it's not a problem. So that's good. We'll wait for Mr. Kenny just a moment.
Oh, oh, yeah. No, no issue. I just, again, I was a very minor point. I just wanted to point that out. So so everything's good to go. Just wanted to make that.
I thought you were pulling it up just to double check. So with that, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of approving Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero eight, resolution approving temporary special event permit processing fee waiver, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, unless there's objection, we are adjourned. Real quick for the new council members, Councilmember Isaacson just joined us last meeting and with Councilmember Mercer this meeting, there is a tradition that when it's safe, new council members go to Extopo with the group to celebrate and wear a funny hat. So hoping that we can all do that within the next six weeks. And we haven't gotten to do that for actually Councilmember Schaefer didn't get to do that either. So.
I was hoping you wouldn't remember that.
Optimistic that we'll be able to induct them in our welcoming way in person very soon. So thank you all and have a wonderful evening.
Good night, everyone.